Sarah, did you get the email from Alexis with her phone number?
Yes, I did. I have been waiting for just a thumbs up from the okay, we're on, I believe. All right, great. So I'm Sarah Marshall, Chair of the Amherst School Committee. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:32 on the evening of Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. We are meeting virtually because today was a snow day and schools are closed. I'd like to start by taking the role to make sure that all members can hear and be heard. So please say present when I call your name. Erv Rhodes.
Present.
Deb Leonard.
Present.
Jennifer Shaw.
Present.
And Bridget Hines.
Present.
Great, thank you. All right, before we move to public comment, I want to explain briefly how tonight's meeting will proceed. Our main order of business is a hearing on the proposed elementary school budget for the 2025 fiscal year. The committee is not voting on the budget tonight. We won't vote in that until March, about a month from now. We will not even probably deliberate about the budget tonight. This committee will have a second meeting this week on Thursday at 6:30 in the town room at Town Hall, and we will begin our deliberations then and do take care of some other business. So even though the hearing will, I think it will end tonight on the budget, you can always submit additional public comment. It's not, it's neither the first nor the last opportunity to give us any comments you wish to about the budget. But our, what we're going to do before the hearing is have public comment on matters not related to the school budget. So if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment now on matter, school matters other than the budget, please raise your hand and you will have up to three minutes to speak. And then I will show one written comment and play some phone messages. Is there? The raised hand function should be right at the bottom of your screen. I don't see any. Okay, in that case, I would like to share my screen and show one, whoops, got to do that first. Is it? No, this is it. I'll give about 30 seconds of a page, but there's only one written comment.
Sarah, I just wanted to ask that you keep an eye on the waiting room because there may be other people waiting to be let in.
Okay, I'm going to ask interim superintendent to take care of that. I can't see anything but my screen. All right, the, the rest of that document is comments about the budget, so I'll show those during the hearing. All right, I'd now like to play a couple of phone messages. I hope this works. Excuse me while I find, all right. Can people hear that?
No.
No, no? Do I have to share my screen? Does anyone know? Let me?
How are you playing the messages?
Well, right out of the email. Let me, um, let me share my screen then.
Greetings, School Committee and community. My name is Lamiko McGee and I am co-chair of-
Do people hear that message?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'll continue.
-the APEA e-Mat Committee, which represents staff of color in our union. The APA Executive Board and Representative Council has voted in support of a call to action or class action. You choose. We want a commitment to the recruitment, hiring, and retention of African-American staff, including administrators, an investigation by an independent investigator agreed upon by the district and the union, and to racial discrimination against staff of color in the district. Staff, including administrators, bound to have racially discriminated against other staff and/or students, be reprimanded and undergo continuous training with periodic reviews until specified goals related to anti-racism are met. A budget of 50,000 set aside for programming related to mentoring and support for African-American staff and students, an additional 50,000 set aside for all staff of color and students. Committee of African-American staff and students formed to design programming for mentoring and support, and a Lana committee formed to design programming for staff of color. A school committee policy mandating anti-racism training for school committee members, district administrator, and staff. Inclusion of African-American staff on all hiring committees, the creation of an Office of Inclusion, Equity, and Belonging, and appointment of a chief equity officer and staff to do the continuous work of dismantling institutional racism and discrimination against marginalized communities. An African-American studies curriculum that is required for all students from grade six through 12, and an African-American studies curriculum committee, which includes students, to design the curriculum. We are requesting a meeting with the superintendent and school committee and look forward to working together with you to dismantle white supremacy in our schools. Thank you.
Point of order.
Who is?
Point of order.
Yes?
Um, I think Amherst Media is not streaming.
Yes, I just let them know.
Okay.
Hold on. All right, so this, if Amherst Media is listening, the video link connects to Amherst Media, but you are replaying an our regional school committee from a couple of weeks ago. What do we tell people that they should be watching on YouTube? Somebody, Amherst Media, please text me. Let me know where people should be watching this meeting if they're not in the meeting. Thank you. All right. Moving on to-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but people who are not, do not have ARPS accounts cannot enter the meeting. Everyone is in the waiting room. I'm sorry.
Doug, if they're in the waiting room, then they are not watching the meeting?
Are they unable to observe the meeting?
No one without an ARPS account can join the meeting right now.
No, I understand that they aren't joining the meeting, but are they able to see the meeting and hear the meeting? As opposed to be participant?
No, they need to be able to be let into the Google Meet. This is an all virtual meeting. So do you want to make me a host or co-host and I can let people, I can keep an eye on letting people in from the, from the, um, waiting room?
You can just hit them all at once. I think somebody- All right, so I'll, I'll play this second message and then I'll go back and first of all apologize and, um, outline again the, how this, how this, tonight's meeting will proceed. All right, so if I find. All right, here's the second general comment left on voicemail.
The following is a public comment from the APEA for the Amherst School Committee as ARMS receives students from Amherst Schools. This is Irene LaRoche from the APEA. Dear interim superintendent Dr. Slaughter, regional school committee members, Amherst School Committee members, and Palan School Committee members, the ARMS Principal Search Interview Committee is composed of an imbalance of central office administrators. Considering the incredible difficulty in finding stable leadership at the middle school over the past decade, we find it shocking that only two ARMS staff members are part of the interview committee. We believe the committee should be composed of at least six ARMS staff, two administrators, and two parents. Who are currently members of ARMS. The ARMS staff representatives on the committee should also be diverse and include at least one African-American member. Our staff of professionals should be able to use democratic process to decide who they want to represent them on this committee. The current makeup of the committee ensures that the staff at ARMS have little say in determining the leadership in their own building. This has obviously been a problem in the past and has led to constant instability. Furthermore, the staff who work in a building, the professionals in middle school education, should have the greatest input in who they believe is best to lead. The finalists may then be brought before a committee of central office administrators and yourself for review. In the past, leaders selected by committees stacked with central office staff have led to instability and no confidence votes by the APEA. Please consider allowing your staff to have the greatest input in who they want to lead them. They will be more willing to support a leader of their choosing and less likely to seek new leadership or no confidence vote. The lack of thought into the leadership in the middle school has been a public embarrassment to the district and the wonderful and dedicated staff at ARMS. The APEA is requesting to meet with Superintendent Slaughter this week to discuss the composition of the Middle School Principal Search Interview Committee before interviews begin. We would like this to be a collaborative process. Sincerely, the APEA Executive Board and APEA Representative Council. Thank you.
All right, I want to apologize to all the people who were stuck in the waiting room. We didn't, or I guess it's a waiting room. We didn't realize you couldn't hear. So I'll repeat what I said a couple of minutes ago. We have not yet started the hearing on the budget. That will happen shortly. We're now in the public comment, at public comment on matters other than the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. If anybody now in the meeting would like to make a couple, a public comment not related to the budget, please raise your hand. You use the little raised hand, hand logo. Okay. I see two. Whoops. All right, I'll, how do I? Admit?
You, you just call on them and then they speak.
Oh, okay. I don't have to. All right. Then, whoops, the first is Mika McGee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes. Sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Happy Black History Month, everyone. I want to bring attention to the hostile work environment that myself and other Black staff face in this district. The APA has issued a call to action, and I hope the school committee takes the high road, recognize that Blacks and other marginalized groups continue to suffer without support and are often ignored while racist individuals become bolder because they realize they will face no consequences and often ally with leadership to suppress our voices. Today, we are letting you know, we've had enough, we're not going to take it anymore. We demand respect and deserve to work in a physically and emotionally safe and supportive environment. So I hope that you will listen today.
Thank you. Next, Irene, and please pronounce your last name out. I don't know how to do that.
It's actually Laura is the person that's next.
Oh, all right. Laura Paliarulo.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for everyone's time today. I'm not sure if this, it's a question. I don't know if it's relevant here or not, but, uh, you know, maybe to be answered later on, but I'm curious. My husband and I have two children in the district, one in high school and one in the Comenantes program at Fort River. Like all other parents, many of us moved here explicitly for the schools. We came here six years ago and moved to Amherst. Really, we have no family here just for the schools. And my question is, what monies have, has the district received, or do you guys intend on receiving as part of the fair share amendment? Thank you, guys. Thanks, everyone.
All right, I see no other hands for general public comment. All right, in which case, we will move to the hearing, the, on the draft fiscal year 2025, Amherst Public School Budget. I believe the interim superintendent Doug Slaughter will make a brief presentation. The school committee members may ask brief clarifying questions only. This is not our time to delve into, into the nitty gritty, but simply clarifying, and then we invite the public to sit here to listen to them. All right? Go ahead, Doug.
Pardon me, um, there were 92 pages of public comment. Did that not get shared?
It has not yet. It will take a long time to share it. So after the presentation, we will then take live public comment from people, people in the meeting who wish to make public comment. Then I will play the voicemails, comments pertaining to the budget, and then I will go through the 92 pages of, of written comments.
Thank you for clarifying. I am concerned about the accessibility of this meeting. It's not being broadcast on TV. There's not a message on TV clarifying what link people should use, and not everyone is familiar with how to access the board docs link. I'm hoping that public comment will be read rather than just scroll through. Thank you so much for your time.
I will, I've had word from Amherst Media that people can follow on YouTube, their YouTube channel. So if anyone is texting you and asking how to watch, um, they can see it there.
But on people's TV screens at home, it-
I understand, and there's nothing unfortunately that we can do about that if we're not in the school for our meeting. This is the best we can do.
That's just problematic. Thank you.
Yes, it's unfortunate. All right. So please, no, no questions until this finished presentation. Go ahead. You are muted, I think.
I think after four years I'd get that straight. So I'll just take you through a few brief things regarding the proposed budget and, and some of the timeline, and then I'll take you through a few, few pieces relative to the current status of the budget. And then more specifically, we'll spend a little more time on the particular adjustments, adds and cuts to the Amherst School Budget for the coming fiscal year. First off, we talked about the budget process, just in general, the sort of timeline and when, under which we work. We start in, in late October through January. We get together and we start putting together the, the, uh, the projections for the coming year as far as what we will need. You know, we do estimates of, of staffing and, and estimates of steps and colas and, and projected needs and et cetera, permanently level services. Then in December and January, we get much more information regarding budget guidance from the town of Amherst in particular, and also we, we, we look and keep an eye on the, on the information from the state as far as what they, they, we think their, their level of support for cities and towns is going to be, and we try to match up what our, our expenses look like for level services versus the revenues we have, and we begin that. At this point in the process, and so in January, we released an initial budget, which showed a, a shortfall relative to revenues that we were projecting. At this point, we're at the budget hearing, and then in March, we'll have the budget vote. Part of the timeline is driven by the, the Amherst budget process, which happens in April, May, and June, and in particular, the school committee has to submit a proposed budget to, to the town manager by April 1st. That, the town manager must then submit a proposed budget, which includes the schools as well as the other departments within the town by May 1st, the council, the finance committee of the council, and the, uh, reviews 30 day, has 30 days to review the budget and hold a public hearing, and then it must make recommendations to the town council by May 30th, and then the council must, must actually vote a, a budget by the end of June for the start of the fiscal year on July 1st. For the coming year, here's a few things that are critical factors relative to our, our budget as we forecast for fiscal 25. First off was the guidance from the town regarding the level of support that they have available to us, and this is a factor, uh, this is about $778,000 above the, the funding support from this year. It's a 3% increase. That involves the, the chapter 78 that they, they project will get from the state, charter tuition reimbursement, choice is a separate category, other funding that the, the town gets from the state. We are going to utilize $750,000 in school choice revenue to help, uh, support the budget. We show this by reducing an expense line. So we have, most of this is applied to classroom teachers. It could be also applied to special education and other areas of the budget, but we primarily leverage that in, in budget lines related to classroom teachers. Circuit breaker funding is a reimbursement of extraordinary expenses related to special education, and what, what we do in regard to that is, is that, uh, expense is incurred in one year, it's reimbursed in the following, and we actually expend it in the year after that. So it's a, it's an ongoing process of utilizing this, but we can budget this precise amount that we have available for that purpose. And again, it provides support to our budget, particularly in the special education area to reduce our costs. We have a strategic partnership agreement with the university, which provides funding particularly to support, uh, students whose first language is not English. And so again, we use this to support payroll lines in particular, and again, much like school choice, we use it to reduce what's shown on the appropriated budget. And the, the final thing I'll say on revenue and resources is we still have our last amount of, of ESER grants or pandemic or COVID-related grant monies. And the, the final thing I'll say on revenue and resources is, we still have our last amount of, of ESER grants or pandemic or COVID-related grant monies. At current, at the current time, we have an estimate of $400,000 of that available to use in the coming fiscal year. That grant must be expended by the end of September this year. And so it'll support our budget heavily in the first, first few months of the fiscal year. And how this shows up in our budget, I'll point out on the, on the next slide. From an expense standpoint, we've taken into account some colas that we have. We have two contracts that are currently in negotiations, and we hope to resolve those with those unions in the course of this next few months. But those negotiations have started. We do estimate what we think will be necessary to cover those, those negotiations. We have them in our control accounts. Just as, you know, a larger particular item in our, in our expense categories, our health insurance, those rates we had originally projected at 12% for the coming year. Those, those we have the final number for, and it's at 9.74%, has been helpful to our budget. And what you'll also see in the course of the budget is there's inflationary pressure in, in a number of different areas, in non-personal expense areas as well. And so as you look at sort of last year versus this year, you'll see some areas that have increased probably by virtue of that. But in total, there's about, there's, you know, relative to level services and revenues available, there's about 503,000, almost $504,000 of, of reductions necessary from that level services budget to, to match up with the resources we have available. So it's a pretty significant, you know, sort of change in, in some of what we have to do. What I'm showing here is a somewhat consolidated version of our budget. This is a, is a summarized by area component of our budget. And you'll see here, this has been, again, presented with the initial budget. There are some small changes from, from before. This line right here at the bottom where it says additions and reductions, part of that is the, is the $400,000 in ESER funds, and the remainder is the 503,971 in, in additional reductions that I'll detail in just a moment. That will give us to the, the available funding from the town of Amherst, which is a 3% increase and just shy of $778,000. So I think the thing I'll say before I get into this next slide is just that the, the process of taking, you know, this large a sum of money out of a budget is very difficult. We have taken deep and careful consideration of all the options, and, and we continue to look at those. And if we have and discover other ways in which we can adjust our budget in a way that does not impact kids or minimizes the impact on kids, that's what we want to do. But it is a conversation we've been having over the last few, few weeks. It's a very difficult one, and there are different opinions even amongst staff who, who've been working through this. And so at this point, this is where we are, and we will, in the course of this evening, hear from, from the public about these, these changes and, and what you think about them. And so I think the first thing here on this next slide, and this is the sort of part of the presentation here. The first thing I'll tell you about is budget adjustments. And, and adjustments are changes to, you know, either our originally predicted amounts of funding or known changes that, that positive, you know, that influence our budget. In this case, all of these changes are ones that, that help our, our appropriated budget. And so again, I want to draw that for just a moment, and that is, an appropriated budget is what we are approving here and what, not here, but in, in the subsequent meeting. There are other sources of funds that we have available to us and that we utilize. But, but when it comes to actually a budget that, that is voted by the school committee and then subsequently by the town council, we're talking about that, that is appropriated from funds that the town has. And so what we have in this first section are adjustments. So we have, we had no sabbatical requests this year. We have a placeholder of about 30,000 that we put in place each year. That can be reduced from, from the expenses of the budget. I noted earlier that we have a, a final number for what our projected insurance cost increase will be for the coming year. That is about $65,000 less than what we originally put, put in our budget. This next line where we talk reallocation of instrumental music to Pelham. So currently, we share staff. We have three staff that provide instrumental music to our elementary, our elementary schools, including the Pelham Elementary School. And, and Pelham is utilizing a, a larger percentage than we had been charging them for. And so this is just a shift. This is a reduction in people. This is just a shift in who's paying for it. So what we're doing is we're asking Pelham to carry their, their full share of, of the cost of those individuals. So this is not actually a reduction. Actually, none of these are reductions in staffing. These are changes to how we fund those positions. And so that's a, a small reduction in our expenses, but an increase in expenses in Pelham. This next line, where we have in our preschool, there are some of our students who are tuition-paying students, and as a result, we have a revolving fund that holds those funds for the purpose of, of supporting that program. In years past, we've supported staff from that. Over the couple of years, we've not leveraged those funds for the purpose of supporting staff. We've mostly been using it for materials in the classroom and that sort of thing. We have enough funding available to support new staff by virtue of, of those funds. And so we're shifting those costs to, to be on, and fund, and therefore to, to take it off of our appropriated funds. Likewise, this next line, a shift of intensive need programming to revolving fund, again, with our intensive needs programs that we have in the district. We have an administrator. And we also, those programs occasionally will, will bring in a student from outside the district, and those students pay tuition to us, which goes into a revolving fund. We're going to utilize some of those funds to help support an administrative position, and we're doing that by two tenths of, of, or about $25,000 worth of cost. What you'll notice in this additions is that same position. In the current fiscal year, we're supporting .3 FTE in the Amherst budget. In looking at that, we, we see that the need is actually more five, and so we're increasing the cost to the district to .2, but then we're offsetting it with revolving funds to cover that cost. So those cancel each other out effectively and, 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 and don't impact the, the, the target that we're trying to get to for reductions in the district. The notable thing in this group up here is that, again, it's, it's changes that we're making that are able to, to support the reduction that we need to make, but, but don't have an impact on, on anything that's being done programmatically within the district. And if anything, it's with this addition of .2 and administration for those intensive needs programs, perhaps a little more support in those programs than they've had in the past. Now to the really difficult part of the, the, the presentation, and that is the actual things that will be different than are currently in place at the moment. And I will be fairly broad in the description of these, partly because the, the, the details are still being worked out and, and so, and, and we're relying on feedback from both school committee and the public as to, to these, these areas of, of what we're presenting tonight. In central office, there's a few, there's a couple of positions that we're going to reduce or eliminate, and that has a savings of FTE as well as a savings of, of $51,000. In our specialized academic positions, we have currently a co-teaching model that we've been, we have been supporting at each building, one teacher per grade level. Unfortunately, we are unable to sustain that in the, in moving forward. And so the level of support will be less than it has been this year. This is not, you know, an, an easy adjustment to make. We will definitely meet all the requirements of A-CHILs at IEP. What will, what will be reduced is, is some of the additional supports that, that co-teaching, especially teachers can provide in the classroom. It's going to be a little less than it was. We're, we're, we're shifting, you know, those resources out and, and, and we'll have a little less support in those programs than we've had in the past. And, and again, I, I will stress that we're still committed to that co-teaching model. It'll just be a little more bare bones than it has been. And again, we will meet all the requirements of, of children's IEPs first and foremost. You'll notice that this only involves Crocker Farm and Wildwood in the, in the Fort River program by virtue of the structure of the schedule with the Comanantais program. And it's, it's not possible to make any reductions there. And so there is no change in, in, in that current structure at, at Fort River. For instrumental music, we are reducing by one the staff we have, for, for special staff we have for instrumental music. What this will mean is that all the students that currently have instrumental music will continue to receive instrumental music. And essentially, when we normally start in fourth grade, we'll start in fifth grade. So kids that are currently in third grade going to fourth grade, that opportunity will be diminished in the coming year. These are not decisions made lightly, and it's very difficult to make these kinds of cuts. But nonetheless, that is, that is a, a choice we're, we're presenting as an option available to, to us as far as meeting our in our preschool, we looked at our staffing levels for the, for that program. And again, looking at staffing levels, number of students we have, level of need we have, and we believe we can make a slight reduction of staff there to, to help meet the demand of, of reductions we need to make. The next line, so committee staff, our, our staff in our IS department, some of our, our central office, support in, in HR and our family center and our directors are building principles are all what are considered committee action. These are also sometimes called non-union staff, and they range, you know, from, from people that are, say, directors to clerical support staff. We had a particular projection for how we do cost of living adjustments. That's what COLA stands for. We're going to modify that structure a little bit, and, and that will create a savings of less than $11,000 to support the, the reductions we need. Next line is in, in custodial staff. During the pandemic, we bumped up the amount of staff we had in each of our buildings by one FTE to do additional cleaning during the early stages of pandemic. We're at a, a stage now with the pandemic that we can reduce staff back to where it was. And what it really works out to be is a .5 in, in two of the buildings. And so that will, will reduce the staff there. But again, I think our, our level of need for covering custodial in the custodial needs in the buildings will be met, and, and partly because we're not in the, in the pandemic at the same low we are. And when we have a number of staff turnover, so for example, this is just shy of six individuals, there are some other savings throughout the budget. You know, slight changes in, in savings in things like, you know, health insurance and that sort of thing. And so we projected $9,000 in staff turnover savings. Sometimes this is about changing personnel and, you know, different points of, of grade and step for where, where they're paid, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's a small reduction there. And so that gets us to a total of 503,971 in reductions in total, which include both actual cuts to, to services we're providing as well as some reductions that are available to us by virtue of revolving funds, shifting of, of cost to another district and, and some other adjustments. And so just to tie this back, this 503,971, in addition to the 400,000 of ESER funds is where this 903,971 is that helps take our budget from level service at just over 4% and brings us in line with the, with the projected revenue for the coming year from, from the town of Amherst. And so I think I will stop there and see if the committee has any questions or, or comments to me.
Yes, from the committee, any really very discreet clarifications, Jennifer?
Doug, can you explain again the, the two lines, shift intensive needs program admin to revolving fund? And I, I think you said that was associated with the one below it, reallocation of intensive need program admin region. Can you explain that again?
Yeah, so we have a, we have an administrator who helps coordinate our intensive needs programs from, from K to 12 or pre-K to 12. Currently, we have .3 of that FTE in Amherst and .7 in region. In looking at that, there's a balance between the district, whereas .5 is probably the more appropriate FTE to be associated with, with the, with the two districts. And so in the adds is the .2 where we are taking on that expense of that administrator, of .2. But we're going to utilize a revolving fund from tuition we've collected for kids that have gone into that program to offset that cost. And so, you know, we don't every year have students come from outside the district to, to participate in these programs, but we have over the last few years, and we've been, been able to build that balance a little bit. So we have a resource available to us for a while to help support, to help support that administrative addition of, of FTE.
Okay, thanks. So it's going to be .5, .5 Amherst and region, this person? Okay, thank you. I understand.
Any other clarifying questions? Deb? You are muted, I think.
Hi, Doug, could you repeat the part about the fifth grade start rather than the fourth grade start? And in particular, is that for band and orchestra?
I'll start with the second first, but yes, is the, so currently, our instrumental music starts in fourth grade. And for next year, that would start in fifth grade. So essentially, all of the, all the kids that currently are, are participating would be able to participate next year. If there are fifth graders that wanted to, to start, they could.
Thank you. Also, could you repeat the part about the administrative reduction? I didn't quite catch all those parts. You said you were going to be broad, but that .8 for FTE.
That's actually, it's, it's not necessarily just an administrator. It's administrative staff in, in the central office. So there are a couple of, of different positions that are involved with that that we're, we're going to reduce. And, and so it's the associated FD with those positions as well as the, the, the associated payroll.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee at this point? I don't, I've lost track of Bridget's little video. So Bridget, if you have any clarifying questions, please speak up.
I, yeah, I, could I pop in? I just want to be sure I understand. So the, the SE academic position is to reduce the co-teaching model but not eliminate it completely at each of those two schools. Is that correct?
That's correct. So currently, in the current year, we have, we have six FTE at each of the buildings as academic co-teachers, essentially one at each grade level. And so this will, will shift it to five. And so we, we won't have that, that, that support in first to sixth grade at quite the same level.
All right, Penny? Herb, anything?
No, no, I've, I've gone through this three or four times, and I think that when we have, get further on down the road with this, I will have plenty to say.
Sure, all right. In that case, we will open it up.
Sorry, Sarah, I'm sorry. I just have one more question. This may be, it's not be too much in the weeds, but there was a time when third graders could start an instrument in elementary. And did that already get reduced, and now they start in fourth grade?
Yes, that's correct.
When, when did that happen, when third graders, the third grade was dropped?
I don't recall. Been a few years, because I don't think we've had a change in a while.
Did that happen, was there an associated FTE reduction when that happened? Do, do you recall?
I believe there was.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have one question before we move to the public comments. I think the mention of Pelham in, in that adjustments panicked some people. It is, it is the case that this committee has no control over Pelham Elementary School or its budget or its programming. You agree, Doug? And so, so any, anyone from Pelham who voiced concern or wishes to voice concern about the impact of this budget on Pelham, anything has to do with Pelham, there is none. All right. So sorry for the confusion and to worry people. All right, now we will go to public comments. You will have, each of you has up to three minutes. Let me get my timer going. So please remember to mute yourself when you're done. And I think we have a lot of people wanting to talk, so do ask you to respect the three-minute limit. So first, Jen, Geneva Delabida, please. Can I mute yourself? Welcome. And you also state where you live. Geneva, are you unmuted? Okay, I will lower her hand and move to the next person. Katie Lazdowski. Please state where you live. And you need to unmute yourself.
I believe Laura Hunter was in front of me.
Huh, that's shifting around. All right, fine.
Sarah, sorry, I'm just gonna, I just want to suggest if you open your participant panel, you can see the order, there's a list with the order.
I do, that's what I'm looking at. And I would have sworn that Katie was ahead of Laura. I don't know. So.
I hope I just didn't lose my space, but.
Why don't I sneak to Katie?
You're no longer on the list with hands raised, Katie.
Katie, you go first, I'll go after you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, thank you, everybody. I am Katie Lazdowski. I live up in North Amherst. I have a sixth grader at Fort River who has benefited from special education, from the music program, from an amazing district. I want to say, first of all, having been in your seats, I empathize with you all as school committee members in terms of the budget crisis that you're charged with figuring out. Your task is not easy, but you have been voted in for a reason. And you're not dismissed from using the student as your unit of analysis to guide your decision-making process. And I just want to reiterate, you're using the student, okay, as your unit of analysis. Think about as you're making these decisions, how does each of these line items, so to speak, impact the students themselves? The further up the chain we get, the less direct impact we have on the students. So look at those higher up overheads, administrators, whatever it might be, as you're making your decision. I'm concerned with Dr. Slaughter's words that we're unable to sustain the model that we currently have with a parent educator in each classroom. It's not that you can't sustain, it's that you're choosing not to. This goes back to home economics. Everyone has a budget. It's how you choose to spend your money. I want to bring to the attention the fact that we lost already music programming in 2020. My son was able to benefit from third grade music thereafter. They're unable to do that. I also want to draw attention to the fact that we need more transparency in terms of how our budget is impacted in the current state that we're in, in our district with all of the excessive MCAD complaints and the other charges that have been paid out to the attorneys, et cetera. So again, if I can leave with a final word, think of the students, think of the touchpoints and the importance of directly impacting the students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Laura Hunter. Please unmute, unmute yourself, tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Laura Jane Hunter. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Amherst. I am the parent of a current eighth grader and a current ninth grader and the spouse of a 17-year middle school, middle special education and math teacher. I have a series of questions, but I want to echo what other folks have said, which is that we, that the first priority should always be on student-facing work. So if we need to cut $50,000 from the budget, it should not be from student-facing work. It should be from administrative costs. Second, if I count correctly, we've made two massive payoffs to superintendents over the last seven or eight years. Maria Garrick got almost $300,000. Mike Morris just got $200,000. If my math is right, that's the equivalent of the amount of money you're trying to cut. If we need to buy off another superintendent, where does that money come from? And that's, that's a serious question. Like, I'm, where does the money come from when we need to pay people off? So they will quietly ride off into the sunset instead of facing the music as some of the other staff who have unfairly been treated have been doing. My child has taken advantage of the music programs through Wildwood. When we talk about cutting the instrumental teacher, we're actually talking about cutting a person. Ariel Templeton is an amazing, amazing music teacher. And we should name her as we should name the other teachers, because these are humans. This is not just roles, these are humans. I'm interested in why UMass is not more involved in this discussion. I feel that we should be, the, I don't know if the school committee can direct the town council, can direct Paul Brockman to talk to UMass because UMass has an extraordinarily nationally-known music program of which Amherst is a feeder too. So if we are concerned about our music program, UMass, rather than giving us $185,000 a year, should be giving us, I don't know, a million dollars a year to support all of the programs that are feeding directly into the flagship university. And I say that as a staff person of UMass. I know how much money we have and I know that that's where the money should be going. So I ask you to cut the money from the top, not from the bottom, certainly not from our fourth graders. That is a travesty. And again, I'm just dying to know where we plucked that 200K from where we paid it off to Mike Morris. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next is Odin Monison Olsen. Please unmute yourself, give us your name and tell us where you live. And then you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Odin. I live in, I live in Amherst, Massachusetts, and I am in the fifth grade at Cocker Farm. Band and orchestra are very important to me as well as my friends. Cutting the budget to either of the instrumental program parts will crush many children's hopes, including mine. Though I personally am in band, I am also here to represent the many other children who could not make it to this meeting, including many of the ones in orchestra. My grandfather is a musician and I want to follow in his footsteps. If you were to cut the budget to the band or orchestra, I, as well as many other children, will not be able to pursue such a thing. We are young, but we have voices. We have power, so I'm speaking up against this. I am here to say that cutting the budget to the instrumental program will make many people's hopes hard to achieve, if not impossible to achieve. Not everyone can pay for private lessons. The instrumental program is a way for them to do that anyway. Please do not cut the instrumental programs budget. Thank you for your time. Also, people kept, keep getting booted off the Raze Camp list, so I would just like to break that out.
So it is changing. I'm not putting anyone's hands down. I don't know.
My hand has been lowered three different times, just to, to point out, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not doing a thing. I don't know what's happening. Thank you, Odin, for your comment. Next is Mika McGee. Please unmute yourself and tell us where you live.
Good evening. Mika McGee, I'm a resident of Belcher Town and I am a staff member at the middle school. And I just want to point out that one of our wonderful school committee members, Earl Roves, himself has stated that we should cut furthest from the classroom. And yet the cuts keep coming in the classroom at the expense of our students and the quality of education in this district. If you have been paying attention over the past couple of years, while the superintendent's budget, budget has continued to, or has, the, the narrative has continued to be that we are in a crisis. We're in a crisis every year, but somehow every year we continue adding administrator positions at the cost of $100,000 a pop in cutting teaching positions. Every year, this has been the narrative. I don't understand how we can continue to add administrator positions, but yet cutting teacher positions and we're in a crisis. So I think the crisis really is our values here. Do we value the quality of education in Amherst or do we not value the quality of education in Amherst? Because if we do, we're going to do what Irv Rhodes said, which is cut the furthest from the classroom. And the past year, we've added about five administrator positions. Since 2023, when Mike Morris left, he added a bunch of positions with people making over $100,000. And that's part of the forum that we sent the school committee. So I really hope that you'll take a look at this, because there's about $1.3 million in administrator cuts that you can make right now and will be just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Next is Ariel Templeton. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Ariel Templeton and I am the band teacher at Cocker Farm, Wildwood and Fort River Elementary Schools. I am also an Amherst resident and a parent of a very enthusiastic fourth grade band member. I'm here on behalf of my team, which includes Heather Sampson and Lincoln Smith, to express our deep concerns with the proposed eliminations of elimination of one of our team members and the fourth grade strings and band program. There are many reasons why this cut would negatively impact our schools. Social emotional learning is integrated in band and orchestra, which is especially needed for our students post-COVID. We are repeatedly told by families that the band and orchestra is what keeps their children going when they are otherwise struggling in school. It provides them with a safe space where they feel that they belong. As a former struggling student myself, I can attest that instrumental programs can and do make all the difference because they did for me. And that is why I'm here today, running the band program. Our program has come back from COVID and has reached its highest numbers that we have on record, serving 340 students across four schools and three grades. Our enrollment now is actually larger than when we were still able to offer third grade strings, which shows impressive growth and interest from families. Cutting a position would make it impossible to offer band and orchestra to fourth graders and would greatly impact the Pelham program as our colleague who would be cut runs the program there. It's hard to find any other programs in our schools that bring our community together the way the band and orchestra program does. Our thriving program has incredibly successful family engagement, as demonstrated by last week's eight concerts. We filled the middle school auditorium four nights in a row and had a 93% attendance rate from our students. Most importantly, this is not equitable. Our program provides free instrument lessons to all students and provides instruments to students in need. If this cut happens, children from historically disenfranchised groups would lose a key access point to a balanced, high-quality education. These more vulnerable students can only access instrument lessons through school. We would also likely see a decline in participation from students who require services as we have been able to provide them with lessons individualized to their specific needs in small group or individual lesson settings. Less staff would mean larger class sizes and prohibit us from being able to tailor lessons to these students who need the support the most. On a personal note, this program is a huge part of my life and I am grateful to be able to make music with our students every day. Our jobs have progressively gotten more and more challenging the past five years, though, between being more and more limited as to when we can see students and a lack of consistent teaching spaces, all while our enrollment has continued to grow at an impressive rate. Losing a third of our teaching staff on top of these already existing challenges would make it incredibly difficult for our program to stay afloat. We hope you reconsider this proposed cut to our students' education. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Walker. Please unmute yourself and give us your name, tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Walker. I live in Amherst. I'm from District Two. I have children, a child in Fort River and another child in the middle school. They are both instrumentalists. I'm hoping that my Fort River student will be able to have a music program when he gets to be old enough. And my eighth grader is loving the orchestra this year. It's one of her favorite classes. I couldn't, she hasn't really liked doing violin for a while, but then when she got into orchestra, it was really what she's been loving to do. But really what I'm talking about now is that I graduated from Amherst Regional High School in 2002. I attended Fort River. I attended the middle school when it was still the junior high. And I have real good institutional memory for what this program, this music program has been. And I have seen throughout the years, the cuts that have been made and how that has negatively impacted the, the music program and the, just the integrity of our arts programs in, in the district. So we did have, we did have music starting in third grade. I was actually in the, in the orchestra when I was in third grade, when I was a student. And then I went all the way through with the same kids. We had an all-town orchestra for the, for the elementary school. We had, so all of the elementary schools for like fifth and sixth grade, or if you were, if you were advanced enough, you could come in. And you really had this good training as an elementary school kid that got you ready for, for the middle school and the orchestra. And we had a stellar program. It was just, it was amazing, this program. I came back as a intern when I was in high school to work with the program. I worked alongside Lori Rabou. We had an internship program in the high school and I was able to work in the elementary school music program, learning how to be a music teacher to kids. I'm a violin teacher now of over 20 years. I stayed in the area to be a music teacher because I was taught to be a music teacher from the Amherst Public Schools. I went off to UMass. I studied to be a music teacher. I came back and I did my student teaching. Did you know that? There is issues with finding music programs, especially string programs, for UMass students to do their, their internships, their, their student teaching. There was two, it was Wachusett and Amherst, and that was the two different choices for our area, for strings to do that sort of student teaching work. That's it. What happens if we cut that? If we cut down this program, it will die. That's how it is. And after the pandemic, we've been struggling to get things up again. It has been amazing for me as a teacher, seeing how everything.
Time is up, please draw, draw your remarks to an end.
Do not cut the position, it will kill the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Molly Cooksey. Please unmute, unmute yourself. Tell us your name, if I mispronounced it, and where you live. You have three minutes.
Well, Molly Cooksey's right. I live in Shrewsbury and I am a kindergarten teacher in the Caminantes program at Fort River. I have to say, I'm so heartened to hear all these amazing experiences from former students, current students and staff. My mom was a music teacher at Fort River for almost 20 years. I'm a student, a graduate of the Amherst Public Schools and I know how hard she worked. I know how hard our music teachers now are working. I see kids that I don't see really having a great time at school just come to life in their lessons on their way with their violin cases. You know, all their different musical instruments. Our instrumental teachers over at Fort River are finding spaces to rehearse with their students in the, in corners of the staff lounge, in little hole-in-the-wall offices. And they are still making it exciting and engaging for students, which I don't think I could do that even. So I, I really hope that we can, we can take that off the table as soon as possible. This is not a realistic cut to make in terms of what it would cost us for our students. In terms of the budget as far as cutting special ed teachers, it might seem like that could work on paper, but I guarantee you, as someone who actually works in a school with children who have IEPs, if you cut these specialists, we will be forced to be in non-compliance. That is just how it's going to be. We will be in non-compliance with legal documents such as IEPs and 504s. Because it doesn't just have to look good on paper, it has to be practical and doable. And if one person has to have 10 kids on their caseload, but two of those kids have to be given their services in another language and another kid is in first grade, but then they have to meet at the same time as a kid in sixth grade, that's not actually doable. Furthermore, at Fort River, we do not have a co-teaching model. That's false. We have special ed teachers that work for a grade level with a grade level for fourth, fifth and sixth grade. Then we have special ed teachers that are kind of floating and they're both trying to support students that are in Caminantes who might be needing to get their services in Spanish. We have one bilingual special ed teacher. And then we have another special ed teacher who supports kindergarten, first and second grade. And then we have another special ed teacher who supports kindergarten, first and second grade. So, um, again, I don't know what it says on paper, but that's not the reality and I really encourage our, um, school committee members. I know this is a lot to keep track of and think about and balance. Please talk to teachers and talk to the families and come and find out what's actually happening. Um, it's, I guarantee it's not what it looks like, what's being written down. Um, and so I would, again, encourage us to look at our administrative budget.
Excuse me, your time is up. Can you-
Five million dollars that we spend every year on admin. Absolutely. Cut away from admin before you start coming into the classroom and taking away services from students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Madarsal Pierce Bonifaz. Please unmute yourself. Tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Madarsal Pierce Bonifaz. I am a resident of North Amherst and I'm also a junior at Amherst Regional High School and I've been playing the violin since I was nine. Um, when I heard about the budget cuts to the elementary instrumental program, I was heartbroken. I still am. I remember as if it was yesterday, the introductory assembly to the violin, practicing my scales every night and filling the whole house with my initial screeching. I remember my tiny quarter-sized violin and how fancy, eloquent and grown-up I felt. I started playing the violin at Wildwood Elementary School and I am so grateful for the experience. Learning how to play the violin has taught me diligence and dedication in practicing daily music theory and how to work together and bond with fellow students on a whole other level in orchestras. Additionally, my high school orchestra experience has been beyond impactful. Yasu Suzuki, the orchestra conductor, has carved out a safe space for so many students, including me. I cannot imagine how the elimination of elementary instrumental instructors will affect students. The elementary music program is crucial to students' well-being, education and their musical development as they enter into middle and high school ensembles. Please fully fund the elementary school instrumental program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Yasuaki Suzuki. Please unmute yourself. Correct pronunciation if I erred and, uh, you tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Yasu Suzuki and I-
My name is Yasu Suzuki.
Sorry. Okay. My name is Yasu Suzuki and I'm a, I, I live in South Amherst and I'm a Amherst parent and also the orchestra director at middle school and high school here in Amherst. I'm here to voice my concerns over the proposed cuts to the elementary instrumental music program. This program is essential to the success of our programs at middle school and high school and have proven to be very valuable to the community. This proposed cut would be devastating, not only to the elementary instrumental music program, but also at the middle school and high school levels. When I started last year in this position, we were still recovering from toll that COVID took on our program's enrollment. I had twenty-five students in middle school between two orchestras combined and also only twenty-one students at the high school between two orchestras combined as well. In just one year, the number has jumped to forty-five students at the middle school and thirty at the high school. This is entirely due to the hard work of our instrumental teachers at the elementary schools. Our program was cut years ago and we lost half of our instrumental teaching staff positioned at the middle and high school. Those positions were never reinstated. As a result, students are not able to start an instrument in middle school and must come into our program already knowing how to play. This is where the elementary program plays a very important role in our success and ability to run our programs. Ariel, Heather and Lincoln ignite the joy and excitement about playing an instrument and that is what keeps our program going. If this cut happens, the middle school and the high school band and orchestra enrollment would likely shift to students from wealthier families who can afford to rent instruments and get instructions outside of school and would not be equitable. In a time when so much focus is put on test scores, it is important to note that students who learn an instrument to do mu- do much better academically than their peers. This has been proven over and over again by several studies, which we will happily provide. The data is there and it is abundant. We need to look at our students as a whole person and not just as a test number or data. The elementary team was recently provided nearly fifteen thousand dollars in funds by Amherst Education Foundation to help resurrect their program from COVID. When asked what their primary concerns were when funding our program, that AEF answered that this money should come from the school system and not their foundation. But the need was so great that they could not, in good conscience, not fund the project. Cutting our program now would show arts and grant organization that this district does not value the arts. Our thriving instrumental program truly sets our district apart from many surrounding districts and is a reason that some choose to stay in our district or try to choice in from surrounding towns. We ask the school committee to continue to value music in our schools and reconsider this cut to our invaluable program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ellen J. G. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and where you live. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ellen Jedri Gadera and I live in Amherst. I actually submitted two letters, but they were a little late, so I'm going to read them here. Um, one is for myself and my husband. The second is from my daughter. Um, we're an Amherst family with two children attending Crocker Farm in preschool and fourth grade. And we urge you to please not approve the cuts to special education and the instrument teacher in the proposed budget. We moved here, like many other families, in twenty eighteen specifically because of Amherst's reputation, a progressive town that prioritizes education with a strong commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion, which by its nature includes neurodiverse children and special education. Andre went to Amherst Regional High School and has had a connection with the town since the early eighties and many of our family members have gone through the school system from elementary all the way through high school. Each day at pickup and drop-off, we see the hard work of our paraprofessionals, teachers and staff and the preschool director. The preschool is already stretched and we know that they are working tirelessly to fill gaps that were present before this cut was proposed. Our paraprofessionals are the backbone of our preschool program and they are stretched. If you cut them, it will affect the entire preschool as well as each child that attends. Our fourth grader has had the tremendous support of special education teachers at Crocker Farm for the last two years. Her ability to put in hard work amount around difficult academic tasks has increased dramatically due to the assistance of these dedicated teachers. She has also just begun to play an instrument at Crocker Farm. Her love for music has really intensified and it's something she looks forward to each week. And just last week, we had the wonderful experience of being able to see her play in her first concert. For a child that has struggled with anxiety and in settings with noise, lights and crowds, um, to see her playing in that setting was just truly an incredible experience and one we could not have imagined just a couple of years ago. The staff that you're proposing to cut, the music and special education departments are the ones who have helped our child develop these essential life skills. Um, we know there are many students in the school that are like her with needs and they will be left behind um, by the choice to eliminate music and special education positions. Special education and music instruction should not be seen as optional or an add-on or something to be cut. When budgets are tight, we need to work with each other and look to find other sources and other solutions. In the words, words of one school committee member, "Let's keep the cuts as far from our children as possible." Thank you, Ellen and Andre Gadera from Amherst. And if I have time, I would like to read my daughter's letter.
Ellen, can I ask you to get back in line then, if you have a-
Sure.
Sure, thank. And, and I will repeat what, um, some people may have not heard earlier. This is not the only opportunity to give us comment about the budget. We're having a meeting this Thursday in the town room and town hall at six-thirty. You can continue to send public comment and appearing and give public comments. So, so i- if you didn't make today's three PM deadline, it is not too late. All right. Next is Laura Poliarulo. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Laura Poliarulo. Uh, we live in Amherst. Thanks for hearing me again. Um, I want to just thank the school committee members for all your service. I know it's, I know it's a lot of work and, um, I, I appreciate it. Uh, my questions are more for Superintendent Slaughter. So, based on the presentation you provided, I understand that the budget is based on actual dollars. But I didn't hear anything about that fair share amendment, which, you know, for people who, uh, you know, just as a refresher, which was a four percent surtax on, on households that made more than a million dollars a year. So this fiscal year, uh, fair share amendment, um, generated, it's capped at one billion dollars. There's two hundred and thirty-one million dollars allocated to Massachusetts schools K through twelve. So my question is, as we're talking about these very drastic cuts to music, you know, my son started in third grade at Fort River. He's now in the high school. Loves playing violin. My daughter is a third grader at Fort River Elementary. And not to mention, um, the cuts to special ed, which honestly are really sad and not representative, I think, of what this district stands for. So how, how are, you know, what do you expect to receive from the fair share amendment? And when do you expect to receive it? Um, would be really, would be really helpful for me to better understand because it would be a shame if we're going to get some of that two hundred and thirty-one million dollars and then we make these cuts beforehand when they're not necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let me just ask Superintendent, do you want to address questions as opposed to just comments? If there's something you can say about the fair share amendment? Go ahead.
Um, I, yeah. I meant to make a remark about that earlier, so sorry. Uh, so, um, it, it is supporting a number of districts around the, around the Commonwealth. The impact on Amherst is minimal to none at the moment. Uh, the funding has been leveraged for some other things, community colleges, uh, early childhood education. Any that's been, to my understanding, any that's been towards, uh, you know, uh, K to twelve education has been largely for the Student Opportunity Act, which is, is predominantly, uh, I'd say benefiting, but influencing or, or impacting, uh, some of the other districts around the Commonwealth that have had uh, a serious, uh, need for additional support. So it, you know, the impact to us will be, will be minimal.
So, so a follow-up question to that would be if we received, so the other, you know, dedicated pool for fair share dollars is transportation. Does the town of, of Amherst have a choice to whether to spend money on transportation or, or education? And I don't know if you have the answer to that. It sounds like more of a town manager question, but-
The answer is no.
They don't.
Yeah.
And why don't we get a greater share in Amherst?
Uh, cause I will just say, I'll answer it briefly, just not to do a back and forth here, but, but the short story is, is that, you know, we have extraordinarily well-funded schools and so the resources that the, that the state is applying in Chapter Seventy during this transition period with the Student Opportunity Act have been focused much more on districts that, that don't have the level of support we have. And so districts like ours, uh, get a, a very, very modest amount of, uh, increase in, in what's called Chapter Seventy or Education, uh, aid.
Thank you. Next is Allegra Clark. Please unmute yourself. Repeat your name, I guess, and tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Um, hi, my name is Allegra Clark. I am a resident of North Amherst. I am an Amherst High School graduate. I am a Wildwood parent and I am maybe a preschool at Crocker Farm parent. We're still considering our options for next year, but, um, I just kind of wanted to add to the historical context of Amherst music. Um, in two thousand, Amherst High School was a grammar scholar, Grammy Scholar recipient. Um, so our program has been great for a long time and we need to continue that greatness for our children. Um, I want to invoke the words of Erv Rhodes again, um, but different words. I once heard him say at a meeting that, you know, why is it that as our, as our students, um, who are Black, Indigenous, people of color and with special needs or, or qualifying for education services and English language learners, as those groups increase, why is our funding decreasing? Why are our services being cut and cut and cut? Um, and so my question is, when we talk about the funding that we get reimbursed per student, is that just per student or does it vary based on whether a student has an IEP or is an English language learner? Because if it's all just blanket funding, that doesn't seem equitable at all. And that seems like an area where the school committee, the town manager, the town council, Mindy Dom, Joe Commerford should be advocating at the state level to get more funding for our schools, for the needs that we have in our schools, because they are great. Um, I, I think about how we, I, I hear a lot about, okay, well, we're losing students. Students are going to different districts. They're choicing out. They're going to charter schools. But I think we need to focus on what keeps people wanting to come to Amherst. And what I hear is our performing arts, our special ed services, and we have a dual-language program now. All three of those things are at risk and it's, it's concerning whether it's because we've lost grant funding or because we're making cuts. Those are the things that we should be building up. Those are the things that we should be keeping level services, level funding to keep the services in place so that we can continue to attract families to this district and keep the families who are here, here. Um, so I'm not asking you to cut anywhere else, although if you have to cut somewhere, let's cut from the top, the farthest away from the schools. But I'm asking, how can we bring all the money into this district that we need so we don't have to make cuts in the first place? Have we talked to Amherst College? They gave money to the library project. They said, hmm, education might be next. Well, guess what? We need some money. Are, are you ready to support us in that way? We have great partnerships with arts and music with you. Where's the money? Um-
Allegra, spend three minutes. Can you wrap up? Oh, thank you. Next is Shannon Kohler. You can unmute yourself and tell us your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
Okay. This is, go ahead. Um, hi, my name is Emmy. Um, I'm a fifth grade student. I live in Amherst and go to Wildwood Elementary School. And I have been playing violin for many years. Orchestra makes me and many other students happy. And if students will not be able to play instruments anymore, many kids will be sad, which is why I believe instruments should be available to students in elementary school.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Leona, you wanted to say something too? Go ahead.
My name is Leona and if you take away orchestra, um, kids like me wouldn't go in there because some people and some kids are waiting so, like, so hard. Like looking forward to, um, going to orchestra and band.
Please don't cut.
Please don't cut.
Yeah, please don't cut funding.
Please don't cut funding.
Thank you so very much. We're a family that lives in North Amherst and, um, we, our, our children are on, you know, we utilize special education at Wildwood Elementary School as well as our children in orchestra and we absolutely love the program. And we would be absolutely devastated to see a reduction and, and an elimination of these programs at our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John. John, please unmute yourself. Tell us your name, where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is John Bilderbeck. I live in South Amherst. Um, we're in the Crocker Farm district, but we are fortunate enough to have, um, a daughter in the comingantes program at Fort River. She just came out of, um, Ms. Cooksey's class, so it was, um, very lovely to hear her speak so eloquently about, um, the values that, that that school maintains. Uh, we moved to this area in, during the pandemic and just after it in two thousand and twenty-one. And we did have a choice as to where to, um, attempt to, to purchase a home and reside. And I will say that the reputation of Amherst Public Schools was a major factor as well as, um, the, the comingantes program. I, I come from a, a family that, um, of Latino heritage and it was very important for me to have, for us, to have the ability that our, our daughter, um, and our son through, through sibling preference can speak Spanish. Um, my broader point here, and it's something that parents have, have already said, but I really want to emphasize the importance of differentiation. We do live in a community that is almost an embarrassment of riches, of quality schools, including private schools, some very progressive schools. And, um, even so, there are many parents who choose to enroll in the Amherst Public Schools and reside here in the town, contributing to the tax base. What is it that, um, these parents are here for? What is it that, um, these parents are here for? It is for the differentiation that these programs provide. Coming on test has been an incredible experience for my daughter. She's in the second year of the program and is already speaking with a beautiful accent. And it's important, uh, music to hear that she might have to wait until fourth grade instead of third grade for instrumentation. That is not differentiation. And I just want to point out that, um, while it may seem like, uh, cuts such as these are helping the budget, it won't take that many parents leaving the district for lack of differentiation or some of the private school offerings that are around, that would cause even more loss to the budget. There are reasons why people stay. There are many families here of means that could be going to a Harts Brook, that could be going to a common school. And they are not because Amherst competes. That differentiation, when it is not able to compete as well, will come back and hurt the district more in the form of families leaving the district for other fantastic options. I want to use any remaining time just to show support for the, uh, teachers, the special education teachers, the coming on test teachers and the music teachers, all of whom we really hope, um, continue to be able to give our, our kids the amazing services that, that we've been enjoying so, so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angelica Bernal. Can unmute yourself, give us your name and where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Thanks so much, Sarah, and good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Angelica Bernal and I am a member of the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. And I am here representing a hundred and sixty-five parents and allies who have signed our petition, which I would like to read to you today, and we have also emailed school committee. We write as parents and allies of students with IEPs and five oh fours to express our concern over the proposed budget cuts, which will impact our most vulnerable students. We urge you to refrain from these cuts as they will adversely affect the quality of our ARPS special education programs. The FY twenty twenty-five budget adjustments, additions and reductions proposal outlines budget reductions of five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Of that amount, nearly forty percent, forty percent comes from reductions and reallocations in the budget of special education programming. Specifically, the budget eliminates two special education teachers at Crocker Farm and Wildwood and a preschool para educator and also impacts the intensive needs coordinator for our district. In addition, eliminating the instrument teacher would be significantly detrimental to all our students. According to the current budget proposal, forty-seven percent of these cuts will impact in one way or another special education students. The COVID nineteen pandemic deeply impacted our special education programming with intensive shortages and staff turnovers in all these areas. Our students in special education were some of the most impacted, resulting for many of our children in regressions, anxiety, uncertainty. Moreover, our children depend on the dedicated and hardworking, hardworking, let me say, special education teachers and para educators who provide the essential support our students need to be able to fully participate in the ARPS programs. They play a critical role in implementing our students' IEPs. And as someone said, not cutting those things will mean our schools will be in non-compliance. We find it deeply troubling that our school committee has focused on special education programming as the target of proposed cuts. Many of us moved to the ARPS school district because of the high reputation of its special education programs and yet have found that each year our programs are the first to be on the chopping block. Our community is one that has and continues to profess a commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. These cuts fail to reflect this commitment. If cuts must be made to balance our budget, we ask our school committee that it keep these cuts as far away as possible from our vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Johnny Dredge. Please unmute yourself. And give us your name and your, where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mo. I am from South Amherst. I go to Crocker Farm Elementary School. I'm in third grade. And I want, and I want to keep learning more instruments. I don't want the orchestra to leave because I want everyone to be able to learn more music.
Okay, just to add to that, um, a question. Who on this call has not had their lives enriched by music? I'm fairly certain the answer is nobody. Um, these cuts are not going to ruin music for everyone for the rest of their lives. But it does tell the kids that music is not as important as other things. And it is. It's as important as anything else happening at the school. For so many kids, it's such a huge part of their education, such a huge part of their upbringing and the quality of life they have. I am absolutely one of those and I couldn't possi, I cannot imagine what I'd be, where I'd be, what, what my life would be like without the experiences I've had in music. So please just consider these things. You all, you all need music and we all do. Thanks.
Please.
Thank you. Next is Ramsey Curti. Can unmute yourself, give us your name, where you live, and you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to address the meeting today. My name is Ramsey Curti. I live in South Amherst. Today I speak as an eleven-year resident with five children who have attended Amherst Public Schools. I also speak as a high school music teacher, now in my twenty-fourth year of teaching. And finally, I speak as someone who is one of the first individuals certified in collective bargaining by the Massachusetts Teachers Association. And I currently serve on my local unit's collective bargaining agreement negotiations team. From this, I have a rather informed view of how both the politics and finances actually work when it comes to funding public schools. I'm disappointed by the decision to even consider the elimination of the lesson program at the fourth grade level in Amherst. In no small part, there is an equity issue here. The students who are served often do not have the privilege of having private lessons outside of school programs. And we have an obligation to serve all students. While I can appreciate the need to save money, the bang for the buck that is spent at this level and at this type of program comes back a hundredfold before the student graduates from Amherst Regional High School. But I honestly don't believe the main issue here is a budgetary one. It is a political one. Cutting music at the elementary level may seem like the best thing to do. After all, students at that level may not perform for the community in such a public way and bring the good publicity as much as older students often do. That part of our community would absolutely be much more loudly concerned. Even though economically and pedagogically and in terms of quality of the output, cutting at the secondary level is at least an improved choice. But I highly doubt any school committee wants to deal with that. What at least some members of the school committee either don't understand or don't want to publicly admit is that the drop in quality of these programs that will occur in the upper grades, we won't see for several years. By that time, some members will have moved on and the remainder will keep their fingers crossed the public doesn't have a long memory, which we typically don't. If the cuts are then reinstated, it takes several years to see the return on that reinvestment. I'm here today to remind everyone that we fund what we value as a community and that valuing something without proper funding is hollow at best. I urge the school committee not to consider this proposal further. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next is Kate Brandt. Please unmute yourself, give us your name, tell us where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kate Brandt. I live in Pelham, about a five-minute walk to the elementary school, and I have a third grader at Pelham Elementary. Uh, this is only our second year at the school, but it's been a great experience for our son thus far. My husband is a musician. He's performed locally, nationally and internationally. I'm an actor and performer and screenwriter, but I studied music and played music from elementary school through high school. So perhaps needless to say, uh, music and the arts in general are incredibly important to our family. For my husband and I, music and the arts were spaces, were these spaces where we found our people. We weren't sporty, so we didn't find our stride in sports programs. Not only did we learn how to read music and play instruments, we found our community through the arts. Our son has been so excited to start band next year in fourth grade. And in fact, we bought him a flute this past Christmas because that's what he wants to play. So not only would cutting the music budget impact students on an individual level, but it would impact the spaces where kids find community when they might struggle to find it in the better or well-funded programs. And so I came here and I'm speaking mostly about music, but I also just want to quickly say that I actually cannot believe that funding for special education is on the chopping block. It's, it's actually embarrassing that IEPs and special education programs are in trouble in our community. So please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll repeat that this budget has nothing whatsoever to do with Pelham Elementary Schools and we are not discussing any cuts or changes to Pelham programs. Next is Ariadne Hill. Please unmute yourself, tell us your name, where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ariadne Hill and I live in Amherst. I'm a fifth grader at Crocker Farm Elementary and I like to play the violin and I've been playing it for a while. I'm lucky enough to have private lessons, but a lot of people aren't. So I'm speaking on behalf of all of those other people. And also the younger siblings who like, I come home to my younger sister and I tell her how fun my orchestra was and she can't wait to start doing it when she gets there. And so if you cut at it, she'll have to wait for longer and a lot of the other younger siblings will too. And it'll make all of us sad, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mateo Pangalo. Please unmute yourself, tell us your name, where you live, and you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. Um, I live in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Our family choices into Pelham Elementary School. Uh, I've already submitted the detailed statement explaining why the decision to cut music in our elementary schools is ill-informed, poorly reasoned and actually harmful. I've provided statistics to you about the tangible detriment inflicted on students who learn in public schools that underfund the arts. There is no ambiguity about the facts. Students in schools with robust and real arts and music programs learn and do better and so do their communities. And my children have provided you with first-person testimony about the transformative and irreplaceable impact of elementary music programs. So the evidence is not up for debate. Tangentially, I find it remarkable that in the course of a single meeting this evening, we can be told by acting super, the acting superintendent that cutting music, uh, is necessary for budget reasons. And yet at the same time, we have, and I quote him, extraordinarily well-funded schools. At the moment, though, I'd like to respond to the pretty outrageous comments made this evening, apparently, and though not at all convincingly, in an attempt to defend the decision to slash the already meager budget of the Pelham Elementary School by pretending that Pelham is not part of the, um, as it's called, Amherst Regional School District. With respect to the statement earlier that the cut in the Pelham music program is not really a cut because the costs are simply being reassigned to Pelham, uh, as the acting superintendent put it, that is in effect is all of us who know the district and who know Pelham, a cut. And with respect to committee member Marshall's pretty unbelievable suggestion that she and the rest of the committee bear no responsibility for eliminating Pelham students' educational opportunities, that's a plainly misleading claim since Pelham is part of our regional school system, gets its funding from the regional school system, this administration and this committee. There's a literal line on the budget that you shared earlier that reads, and I quote, "reallocation of instrumental music dash Pelham." So you are responsible, and let's be plain, what this committee administration is saying is that it no longer wants to be responsible for upholding its commitments to the families of Pelham and the families like ours that choice into Pelham and send our town's tax dollars to Amherst's coffers. What other individual school in our district has been told that it will have to take on itself a cost that the district simply no longer wants to pay? What other individual school in our district has been told that their students aren't really part of the district? That is the message that's being sent to the children and families of Pelham by this decision. And papering over that fact with claims otherwise is frankly disingenuous. We all know what an unfunded mandate is. And to pretend that shrugging off the district's cost to one of the district's schools is anything but that is frankly insulting. The arts are treated wrongly as expendable. Small communities are treated wrongly as peripheral. This administration, this district and this committee owe our students, all of our students, including the students in Pelham, an equal enriching and meaningful education. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say one more time, this is a meeting of the Amherst School Committee. This is not the Regional School Committee. Next, uh, we have Anna-Lise Kettrell. Please unmute yourself, state your name and where you live, and then you have three minutes. Anna, oh. You need to unmute yourself.
Anna-Lise, if you're on a mobile device, you might need to tap or swipe to find the unmute button.
She had her video there a moment ago. She just, so, it'd be a phone, yeah.
Sarah, are you able to unmute her?
I don't think so. Anna-Lise, I'm going to move on to the next person. I'll leave your hand up if you.
Hold on, it, I'm sorry, it, for some reason it blocked us off, but.
Okay, there you go. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm, my name is Delaney. I'm in first grade and I go to Fort River and I'm really excited to play an instrument like my older sister Adella. And I love being like Adella.
I'm Adella, Delaney's older sister, and I think that music is important because it's empowering and allows me to have, to have a voice without even speaking. And I think everybody should, should have a voice. So please may you reconsider cutting the music program.
So I'm Anna-Lise Kettrell. Um, we're residents of Amherst and I'm a parent to a Fort River first and fourth grader. As a violinist and a member of an underrepresented minority, I personally benefited and thrived from being exposed to music. I went on to play in middle school, high school and college with a symphony. And without that exposure in elementary school, my family wouldn't have been able to provide it privately. Like my daughter Adella, I too found my voice I didn't know I had through music. It's so disheartening to think of the potential elimination of our music teacher who plays a crucial role in exposing students to the transformative power of music. Music has been proven to enhance cognitive envelopment, improve, excuse me, concentration, boost creativity and foster a sense of belonging. Removing this vital resource would detrimentally impact all of our students' growth and holistic development and deprive them of the countless benefits of music education. Our family strongly opposes the proposed budget adjustments, which unreasonably target music and special education programs, two pillars of our educational system. The consequences of these cuts are severe, particularly for those students who, who will be most affected. I believe the new school building plan even includes music rooms, but the program may not even exist if these cuts are made. Our community prides itself on inclusiveness, providing equal opportunities for every child to thrive. Yet these proposed cuts undermine these values. They also threaten our progress in creating an equitable and diverse learning environment. Our educational system must continually strive to be inclusive and ensure a commit, that every student receives the necessary resources and attention that they deserve. By neglecting our commitment to music and to special education, we risk hindering the potential to countless individuals who rely on these services to thrive academically and personally. Please reconsider these cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, excuse me, Michelle Marinelli Prindle. Can unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michelle Prindle and I'm a resident of South Amherst. I have students at, in the eighth grade orchestra at ARPS. I have a sixth grader and a second grader at Crocker Farm. And my husband and I are both professional performing musicians. I'm an opera singer and he is an electric bass player and cellist. And also we own a music school, the Prindle School, with locations in East Hampton, Florence and Hadley. And also, we own a music school, the Prindle School, with locations in East Hampton, Florence, and Hadley. I was really shocked after reading Superintendent Slaughter's weekly update two weeks ago where he praised the achievement of six talented and hard-working dedicated high school musicians who were accepted to the All-State Music Festival and praising them and their hard work to find out that now he's considering, and the school committee is considering, cutting music instrument funding for the elementary schools. The fact is that without a vibrant elementary program, there is no program at the middle or high school level. Especially for strings which have a very steep learning curve, children need a long time to develop the fine motor coordination to play the instrument and develop music fundamentals and the ability to read music to be able to play in an ensemble. I can speak from personal experience that Mr. Suzuki is doing phenomenal work with the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. I was blown away by their concert last year at the high school. And that's the only opportunity in this area, in this entire region, for students to play in a string orchestra in the public school. East Hampton, North Hampton, Hadley, Hatfield, all of these school districts cut funding for string programs decades ago, and they were never brought back. Long Meadow has a program and Amherst has a program. Beltratown does not have a program. So this program brings people to our district, people who care about music. As others have also stated, this increases the achievement gap for our most vulnerable populations. As the owner of a private music school, I am well aware that paying for private music lessons is a luxury that only few people can afford. So we're saying essentially to families that do not have the means that unless you are able to rent your own instrument and pay for your own instrumental lessons at North Hampton Community Music Center, at the Prindle School, or elsewhere privately with all the great teachers that live in this area. If you're not able to do so, then your children can't do this. That's a regressive tax on people that can't afford this, and it only serves to widen the achievement gap for those students. I also would like to say that I think it's time for the school committee to have some very difficult conversations with the town council about how do we get more money from these colleges? How do we get them to increase the pilot payments to the town?
Your time is up. Can you, can you conclude?
I, I know that my tax dollars are going to pay for the streets surrounding Amherst College and the green that's being revamped. But I want my tax dollars to go to my children's education and that of other children who live in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Hall. Can I mute yourself?
This is Kyle Vusacker. My wife is Rachel Hall. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, my wife is in a meeting. I am here with my two children. I have a fifth grader and a third grader that go to, um, Fort River Elementary. We, uh, we moved here three years ago from Portland, Oregon during the pandemic. We do not work in, in the district. We all work remote. But my wife works in, uh, for a national organization in D E I. Uh, we live with my wife's mother who works at the local hospice house and I work in biotech. And the reason that we chose to move to Amherst is the school district. We chose to, to go here because of the diversity and the values that were portrayed for Fort River. Um, and I can say that we have been incredibly impressed, so this hits very, very deeply. I think in, in this moment with such divisiveness, there are very few things that we all can socially agree upon. Um, and that is the education of our children, specifically coming out of the pandemic, the mental health, and getting them removed from technology and the epidemic of screen time. We all know what this is doing to our children and the effort it takes us to get them out of that and engaging socially and interactively. And this is one of the pivotal, uh, programs that has done that for our children. So when we have something that we can agree upon across all walks of life, it is alarming that that is what we choose to reduce funding for. I, I find it, um, preposterous, to be honest. So I think as many people before me have said, we need to match our values with action. Um, and my child would like to, uh, show what they have learned in the year and a half.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Alexandra Monison Olsen. I think we, you were first in line and it didn't work.
Yeah, I, my, so unfortunately, my hand got lowered like four or five different times and now my four-year-old is forty-five minutes past bedtime, so I'm gonna have to truncate this. My name is Lexi. I'm the parent of two children in the Amherst Public School District. Uh, I currently have a fifth grader and a third grader at Crocker Farm Elementary. Both of my children also attended the public preschool at Crocker Farm before moving on to the elementary school. Uh, and I'm here to voice my objections to the currently proposed budget cuts to the special education program, the preschool program, and the music program. We need every single one of the teachers in the schools that we currently have, if not more of them, at all levels. My children and so many others not only benefit from these programs and positions, but require them to be happy and successful at their school. These programs offer them opportunities that I would not be able to provide them outside of school. Um, I'm going to skip all of these middle paragraphs where I talk about the overwhelming benefits of learning music um, and point out the fact that the kids that were currently talking about cutting special education and music programs from are the ones who were most deeply affected by the pandemic. Uh, they missed out on huge swathes of in-person learning, and even once they returned to school, there was a paucity of close group interaction that had a negative effect on their social development, community-building skills, and learning group social skills. These children, by all accounts, have needed significantly more socio-emotional support, understandably. In short, the proposed cuts are a double hit to our most vulnerable students. Those who are struggling academically and/or emotionally, those who have special learning needs, those who missed out on so many early educational group experiences due to the pandemic. And those from families who are not in a financial position to provide art or music lessons and/or special support services outside of school. The proposed cuts to the special education and music programs are related, and they will have interactive effects on the students. The services provided by paraprofessionals are important academically, but they're required to sufficiently support the emotional needs of all the children in the classroom, not just the ones who are on I E Ps or five oh fours. If you make these cuts, they are going to not be able to support the students, not be able to support the teachers, not be able to support each other in order to have successful learning environments. Now, I understand that the school committee does not write the budget. That is the responsibility of the town council. However, it is your responsibility to fight for what is best for our students, teachers, and school community regardless of what the recommendations of the town council are. And that is just what the documents that you are holding are. They are recommendations. You are under no obligation to accept the budget and you are under no obligation to listen to their recommendations. I also understand that the town council is operating within the bounds of the money that is available and that some educate, some of the education budget is controlled by state and federal governments that do not prioritize our children or their education, and they have delivered significant budget cuts of their own. That said, Amherst is a very wealthy town. We have some of the highest property taxes in the areas, and our schools are purported as some of the best in the area. And yet, time and time again, I have seen our teachers overlooked, the students overlooked, and the parents' concerns and voices be silenced with a lot of hand wringing and a lot of lamenting about how there's nothing to be done. But there is something to be done. We can always make a different choice. And I am tired of the excuses that we keep hearing. We missed out on building brand-new school buildings that could have housed these current students, both freeing up money for fair and sound.
Time is up. Can you conclude, please?
Yeah, my conclusion is that you should go back to the town council and you should say no. Your job is to support the schools, and to do that, you have to tell them that you refuse these cuts rather than just accepting that they have to happen. They don't. There is other money. There are other projects in this town that should be deprioritized, and our children are the ones who deserve the money. And I will echo what everybody else has said. Make these cuts somewhere further away from my kids.
Thank you. Next is Reese Prindle. Please unmute yourself. Give your name, where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Um, I'm Reese Prindle. I live in South Amherst and I'm in the eighth grade right now at Amherst Middle School. I'm in the orchestra with Mr. Suzuki. Um, but I, we, we moved to Amherst when I was in fifth grade and I started out um, in the orchestra. It was my first orchestra experience in sixth grade with Ms. Sampson. And it was a great experience for me because I got to make a lot of friends. And I had been playing violin previously, but never in an orchestra, working together with other people. And my sister, um, just recently started playing cello. Um, but she will be in fourth grade in two years. Um, and she's really excited to join the orchestra someday. Um, and I just wouldn't, yeah, I would not be happy to see that opportunity taken away. Um, and an extra year of waiting added on for her, where she couldn't be making those bonds with other people. Um, and that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Y J Kohler. Please unmute yourself. Give your name and where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is Wei J and I'm from North Amherst. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. I myself have come from the Amherst School District and I was a proud, I was a, I was proud of the diversity of the community as well as the programs that it offered, such as the beloved, uh, orchestral band and chorus programs. I currently have five kids, some who are graduates and some who are currently experiencing the Amherst School District, with one daughter currently enjoying the orchestral program. I am, however, truly disappointed that our eight-year-old won't be able to experience the orchestra as I did in third grade because of a cut made recently. Enough is enough with the cuts in the arts. I can say that I myself, you know, the successes in my life have, I can attribute them to the Amherst orchestral program. I have very fond memories of performing in Philadelphia, Montreal, and New York, spreading the love of music, of what brings people together. Complete strangers were suddenly standing side by side with a common bond in an intersection of time and space. Impossible differences and grievances forgotten for just a moment. It was such a powerful thing to witness and to perform for them, which I had no words. Why would we consider cutting a program that has to do with bringing people together? Music is a global language that we speak all over the world, that we can all understand, spoken for tens of thousands of years. Music is especially important now, more than ever in these divisive times. We should be expanding on it, not cutting it. We live in Amherst, five great universities in the near vicinity, three of them directly in Amherst. Let's find other ways to keep our students first and keep them in mind. Let's look at UMass, which have greatly benefited from our town. Let's look at the administrative costs and keep them low, cut furthest from the students. I agree with everyone else. So we can take pride in our future. Keep our students first, our future first. Keep their learning diverse, keep them producing music and spreading the language of love and togetherness that is understood all over the world. We need this more than ever. I really urge the committee to not cut these programs, to not cut special ed, not cut the music program. They are part of the web of diversity that makes Amherst so special, which I mentioned earlier. I urge that we look elsewhere to improve revenue or at least cut somewhere far, 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 far away from the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julie H. Please unmute yourself. Tell us your name, where you live, and then you have three minutes.
I'm Julie Hawke Owl. I live in Sunderland. I have two children in the district. Their fathers are both Amherst residents. I started violin when I was in third grade and I still play my violin with local people. It's a lifelong thing that we should not be cutting from our children. The sooner students start, the better for them socially and emotionally and neurologically, educationally. I echo everything Mr. Kohler said and a bunch of things that other people said. I have a neuroscience background and the evidence bears it out. I cannot, they just, I'm not a very good public speaker. I think that it is a huge disservice to our children and our community to, sorry, to, take away one of the very few non-screen events, um, things to do at, um, in school or in, at home life. And that, and what is the other thing, Jim? I also, my students have, I didn't know the special ed was on the table as well. And both of my children have taken advantage of the I E P and the five oh four. It has served them. Um, I have noticed that with my older I E P student, things were better. He's gonna graduate this year. We had more services and as, you know, time has gone on, like my five oh four student is a freshman this year and things have been harder. Hasn't had as many of the benefits as my older student and, um, feel really sad about this. Seems like what other people, I, I'm not, I'm not good at budget stuff. I don't understand where the money comes from or where it needs to be found and I just really wanna be a vote for, oh, and equity. That was a huge one for me. There are, like, other people have said before me, there are so many students out there who is either their family would not prioritize it, or they literally just could not. And being able to try instruments out without any penalty is, it's huge. My student, my older student tried out, I don't know, several things, trumpet and tuba, no, not tuba, the trombone and cello. But I have a violin player and he is absolutely amazing. Now that Mr. Suzuki is working with us and I just, I can't say enough about the music program. It's a wonderful thing all around and it's a lifelong benefit to us, our children, our community, our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Ellen J G. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Ellen Jedry Cadera and, uh, I'm back again, but I'm going to try to play a recording of a letter that my daughter Maya wrote. Um, hopefully you'll be able to hear it. If not, I have it right here and I can also read it. So just let me know.
Dear Amherst School Committee, my name is Maya and I'm in fourth grade at Crocker Farm. I was excited to play violin because I wanted to learn how to play it. Thirteen of twenty of the kids in my class are wanting to play an instrument this year. If you took away one of the instrument teachers, there wouldn't be enough people to teach kids who wanna learn to play an instrument. This would be a bad thing 'cause kids who wanted to learn how to play an instrument wouldn't be able to do so. Kids who would still be playing or want to learn how to play an instrument next year would be disappointed if they didn't get to learn or continue the instrument they wanted. I would definitely be disappointed if I stopped learning how to play violin. Could you please not take away an instrument teacher? Sincerely, Maya, Amherst fourth grader.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nettie Harrington Pangalo. Please unmute yourself.
Hi.
Yes, and where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, I have two children here and they both have a short statement that they would like to read. We live in Chutesbury and they attend a choice into Pelham Elementary School.
My name is Tobias Dillon Pangalo. I'm a third grader. I think it is not right to cut the music program in Pelham. First of all, I am really excited to finally be able to listen to orchestra. And if you do that, then you'd be taking away something that I have been waiting for for a very long time. Second, if you don't have enough money, orchestra and band take up less money than a lot of other things. Along with that, learning music is very important, not only to me, but to lots of people as well, in school. Just imagine a world with no music. Do you like to listen to music at your house? If you do, you must know what it feels like to not have music playing. If you do, you must know what it feels like to not have music playing, empty, lifeless, and joyless. Now imagine that feeling at school, kids would pay less attention in class and everyone would feel sad. In conclusion, I think you should not get rid of the band. Thank you.
I am Atticus Pangalo, a second grader and vi- and first violinist at Pelham School. I've heard that you would like to kill the band and orchestra programs. First, this is a terrible idea, even though I wouldn't even get Pelham when you cut these. Um, please consider the consequences of doing this. Um, playing in a band orchestra gives kids challenges that they can figure out together and let them, and let them choose. Meet kids from different grades and show them they can succeed through practice and repetition. Without the orchestra, I would never have known half my friends exist. And without the band's friendly rivalry with us, I probably would never have met most of the other half. It was also a helpful motivation when I was doing block social. In orchestra, none of that matters, and that's for a bad band to just go home and play. Even if I won't be using this program anymore, it would hurt a lot to see you in something that helped me so much. And I would feel bad for all the kids who never got the kind of support that needed it. I know that we need to save money, but we can figure out a different way to do this. Band and orchestra take very little money since this day. And we shouldn't be making these cuts in the classroom. Even if they're very minor details, everything adds up. We could probably save the same amount of money, just turning the thermostat down, reducing coffee and paper, and using less electricity. We could save a lot and not hurt schools by doing it. I'm choosing to Pelham because of this program. If you're worried about the number of students using this, using the program, then you should start looking at the percentage and not the number. Pelham is a small school, looking at that number with a different point of view, drastically change and I'll look at the program. First of all, just because I go to a small school doesn't mean I have less of a right to learn than students who go to a big school. Second, Pelham being a small school can in fact make a lot more value. As it contributes into, as it introduces even more of the social stress earlier, which the problem, which, which the program helps with. Finally, I know that a lot of kids, sibling included, have been waiting a long time to be open office. To be in an orchestra. As the matter is of, as the. You are like parents to these kids and all the experts say it's a bad behavior with their dreams. I think you know as well as I do that it would be a bad idea to do this. Please think about this, is down, downright heinous to cut from the special education program and you know it.
Thank you. Next is Amber Cano Martin, please unmute yourself. Tell us your name and where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Um, hi, yes, Amber Cano Martin, um, I live in North Amherst. Um, and I have two children in the schools. Um, I have, um, currently a second grader in the Caminantes program at Fort River. Um, and just wanna reiterate what was said about how wonderful that program is. Um, my, my son is also biracial and bilingual and to be able to speak and learn in Spanish at school has been invaluable. It's a number one reason we stay in the district, it's an incredible program and, and wanna protect that program. Um, and also just, you know, speaking, everyone has spoken so eloquently about the importance of our special education staff and about the music program. Um, I just wanna echo all of those things and, and lift all of that up. Um, but what I wanna focus on is this idea that we have no choice but to make cuts. Um, there's places where there's participatory budgeting and we start with building blocks of like, how much does it cost to run a school district? So that's what, that's the cost we're starting with, not starting with how much we need to cut to fit a budget. Um, so I think we need to, to question that framework and way of thinking that we have to cut, right? There's no choice, these, this is actually a decision that human beings make. Um, and human beings can unmake that decision, right? Um, I'll give you another example, so I was in a very different budget fight a couple of months ago. About the library project in town and I attended another hearing just like this. Um, where, you know, grown adults on the town council argued for the fact that we do have ten million more dollars for the library project. Which already is costing, you know, fifteen million dollars, um, and counting. So, um, this again is a decision that we make about what we value in this town. Um, just as the town council can make that decision to fund that extra ten million, the town council can make a decision. To give us five hundred K more for our schools, right? Like, I, I remember, again, I was just in this fight last year about the library paraeducators. Where it was being told we couldn't afford thirty K for a library paraeducator. But yet millions of dollars for a library building that my kids don't visit, my kids go to the school libraries. Um, I, I just wish that we could think rationally and that we could think outside the box and understand that there is a choice here. And we're just consistently making the wrong choices, our elected officials are making the wrong choices. Um, and I would encourage the school committee, um, don't accept that we have to make five hundred K of cuts. Instead, go to the town council and say, this is what it costs to run a district, to adequately fund a district. With the programs that we have now. Because you know what, next year it's gonna be another sad hearing just like this about more things that we're gonna cut. Um, and I don't think we need to be trapped in this cycle. Um, I, I think we need to fund our district based on what, again, what it costs to run a school district. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Cora Fernandez Anderson, please unmute yourself. Tell us where you live and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ismael Dahy and. I am in Fort River. I'm in the fifth grade and I think that it would be very unfair for all the students in and. Out of band and orchestra, cut one of the teachers since. When you watch the band play, you sort of have a feeling that. You can do the things that you see. And if you cut one of the teachers, you just don't have that option anymore.
Hi, I'm Cora Fernandez Anderson, I'm Ismael's mother. I'm also, uh, the mother of a seventh grader in the middle school that is also in the band. Uh, Ismael is a percussionist, um, Isaf, my daughter, um, is, uh, plays the clarinet. And I wanna say I agree with all the points that were made by other families. But I want to raise one single issue, you know, like cutting dispositions is sending the message, we don't care about kids. But it's also sending the message, we don't care about teachers. This is a labor issue also, how are these teachers and other teachers that might be cut like next? Are gonna continue to do the work and care for our children if they live under the uncertainty that they might not have the job next year? They might not have the job the, the following year. It's like just impossible to, to, to work in that way, so I do wanna make that point as well. So, think about the children, but think about also, um, all, uh, the teachers. Also, something that Ismael, uh, has told me is that in his fifth grade class in Fort River. There's only two kids that don't participate in either band or orchestra. So this is a really large program affecting a, a lot of kids. I also, you know, uh, want to, uh, oppose the cuts for special ed and for paraeducators as well. We just wanted to speak in particular on the music program cuz it's the one we know the best. So thank you for your time and I, we really hope that the school committee will defend and represent all the parents and children. In, in, in this meeting and in the district, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Levine, please unmute yourself, tell us where you live.
Yeah, uh, my name's Dan Levine, my family lives in South Amherst. Um, my parents still reside in my childhood home, which is very near Wildwood. Uh, like my son, who has significant special needs, I attended Wildwood and while I left this area for quite a while. My family has resided here for over forty years. Uh, my wife and I made the very difficult choice to move three thousand miles specifically for the school system during the worst parts of the pandemic. Uh, we both own businesses in this town. Uh, in fact, she's a realtor whose job is to convince people to find homes in this town, the schools being a major component of that reasoning. I wanna very briefly preface this by recognizing the value of music curriculum, which benefits a very wide population of students. And which has received outsized attention here, so I'm not gonna address it further. It has in fact received enough attention. Unfortunately, parents of kids like mine are underrepresented here. Many parents like us are unable to participate in meetings like these because of the challenges that families face every day. Literally at this very moment, my seventy-seven-year-old mother's help is required to allow my wife and I to participate in this meeting, for me to speak. We need that help. And those other parents who are not here, speaking on behalf of their kids, those are the reasons why. So I'm choosing to participate in this meeting because the largely even keeled responses from most of the other parents here have been lacking in one thing. Anger and rage. I'm utterly furious at the idea that the cuts these commit, this committee tends to target. At the district's most vulnerable students are even being counted. I know these kids and I know these teachers, I've watched a revolving door of paraprofessionals and teachers. Struggle every day to meet the needs of these children who cannot ad- advocate for themselves and whose parents are often too overwhelmed to do so themselves. This is not the first school committing I've sat through. Uh, I've, I've grown accustomed to watching the committee sit quietly, wait out the storm with gently stated, kind objections and complaints. Only to hide behind tied hands blaming the town and then the state, as Alison McDonald recently did in the current. At the end of the day, you're talking about taking funds from children with special needs. Are you, and I'm asking the committee, are you that kind of person? Is this that kind of town? Or are you the kind of people who will stand up for kids like these? Because I was raised here and the teachers who taught me would be rolling in their graves.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Hudson. You can unmute yourself, give us your name, where you live, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, I'm Jeff Hudson, I live in Pelham, but don't worry, I'm not gonna talk to you as a Pelham resident. I have three other hats that I wanna use in my remarks tonight. I am the parent of a tenth grader at Amherst High School who plays in the orchestra. I am an alumnus of Amherst High School who, um, benefited greatly from the music program there. And, uh, I am also a professional musician of some three decades. I want first to talk about the, the cuts to the music program. It seems hugely counterproductive, as several people have alluded to. There is a wide body of studies showing that participation in instrumental music. And ensemble music has an outsized impact on students. Intellectual growth, on their emotional well-being, on their, their ability to flourish. And it is, I think it is tremendously counterproductive.
Can he be given another spot in the line and return?
Are you not hearing me?
No, I hear him just fine. All right, can?
I'm sorry, why am I being cut in the line?
No, no, you're fine, you can keep going.
Sarah, I didn't hear him.
Oh, I can hear him.
Okay. I am, am I audible or no?
Yeah, I can hear you, Jeff.
Okay, um, I'm not quite sure where I was. Um, I was talking about the benefits of the music program, that's one point, I won't, I won't go into that more. I wanna reinforce what others have said about the equity argument. Um, public school music is. An open door. And if we take that away, then we are reinforcing music as simp- something that is only available to families of privilege. And I think that's a huge mistake. And the third thing I wanna say is, and others have alluded to it, is there is this ripple effect. If you take a year away from elementary school, the high school orchestra, the middle school orchestra will suffer. Greatly down the line, already we've taken a year away. Um, when I was in the school, third graders took, um, took instrumental lessons. And as people have, have said, the sooner you start, the more you can advance and you get, start to get the benefits of ensemble playing. So I really, I know you have difficult choices to make, but I really wanna urge you to look for something outside of the instrumental music program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julian Heinz. Can you unmute yourself, I don't know, perhaps you're on a, oh, no.
Hi, um, thank you so much, Sarah. Um, my name is Julian Heinz, I am a senior at Amherst Regional High School. As well as a kid who attended both the special ed program you planned to cut at Wildwood. And the instrumental music program that you planned to cut at Fort River. I took it in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Two of those grades, one has already been cut, one is going to be cut. So, I would urge you to avoid these cuts, um, and I have a few reasons for that. I look to other districts where in our neighboring towns of Grand Bay and Veltshire Town. They spend, uh, fifty-two and sixty percent respectively of their entire town budgets. On educational services for their students. Whereas Amherst spends forty-seven percent. So we are lagging behind some of our other communities in how much we value education. Instead, we are putting those funds towards things like the library, public safety and police services and the capital budgets. All of those towns have lower expenditures in those areas when compared to Amherst percentage-wise. So I think although the school committee only has some jurisdiction here, this is a matter of priorities, not a matter of we're forced to cut these positions. Seventy thousand dollars for an instrumental music teacher is not a whole lot of money when you look at a ninety-three million dollar budget in town. And it's not even a whole lot of money when you look at a twenty-six million dollar budget for the Amherst Public School District. Not even the regional schools, just the Amherst Public School District. So I would urge you to look elsewhere, look to, um, our wealthy college partners at Amherst College. And even at UMass who can contribute. Look to the administration, who when I walk in the doors of the high school every day. I see awesome, hard-working teachers greeting me, helping me learn, showing me how to thrive in an educational environment. In advancing my own goals of college and career. Whereas the administrators, although I'm sure they have hard jobs to do, are nowhere to be found. We don't see the administrators as students and I would urge you to look at the people. Who the students won't see, who won't affect the students in their daily lives. If you make a cut to the administration, I won't see it most likely. But I can tell you, I definitely will see it if you make a cut in my, um, services that I had. Um, and programs that I took or in the current, um, classes that I take at the high school. So I would urge you to look elsewhere for these cuts and we'll see you on the twenty-seventh, when you propose the regional cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Alexander Lopez, please unmute yourself. And give your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
Um, I'm Alex Lopez, I am a para to three kids at Crocker Farm. Um, who have been in the co-taught classes that you're talking about affecting. Um, who have been in the band and just performed in an excellent concert, um, that you're talking about affecting. I'm also a para at Summit, uh, our therapeutic high school in town. Um, and I'm also an executive board member of the APA, the Union of Educators. Um, I wanna talk directly to all the kids who have been on this call, thank you. You all are amazing. You have turned a snow day without snow into a victory, which is exactly what every educator in this town could have wanted. Because your bravery in showing up, your courage in doing this. Is something that the superintendent of your schools did not have. When you heard adults tell you, we don't have enough money for you, you said, no, it doesn't have to be that way. The superintendent started explaining his math today by saying that when he was told the town didn't have enough money for them. He said, okay, we'll figure out how we take it from kids. Your bravery is what we're going to need, because unfortunately. What's on the table isn't gonna get better. What they're proposing right now at our elementary schools, they're gonna start talking about that at our middle schools and our high schools. They've got scheduled meetings for that too. But the good news is that I know your older siblings, I know that your other friends are ready for that fight as well. Because last time your teachers went to ask for money to make sure that our schools were a safe and stable place for all of us. They told us, no, we needed to sacrifice so that our schools could continue to provide the services that you all deserve. We did that, we've done that years in a row. But now they want you to sacrifice and I can tell you, we will not do that. We, as a community, and the hundreds of people who have been on this call, are going to borrow your bravery as we move forwards. Because when adults tell us that they don't have enough money for you, we are now going to say, no. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. Erica Drake, please unmute yourself, give your name and your town of residence and you have three minutes.
My name is Erica Drake, I live in South Amherst. Um, I have a fourth grader at Crocker Farm Ele- Elementary School and she's with me here. And she joined the string program as a cellist this year. Um, I am also. I am also a musician myself. I'm a professional musician and licensed teacher. And I work for the UMass Amherst Department of Music and Dance. I'm the undergraduate program director there. I'm asking now, I am insistent that the committee reconsider the proposed cuts to the music program. Music serves our children, our community, and the greater good in ways that are repeatedly recognized through studies and empirical data, and yet cannot be simply defined and understood well enough to save it from being on the chopping block when funds get tight. This is emotional for me. In a world and school curriculum that is increasingly online, isolated, siloed, individualized, and lacking true togetherness, this experience of learning and playing a musical instrument with your peers provides the space for students to feel safe, feel heard, develop listening skills, cultivate empathy, and just work as a team. These are all elements that I think we can agree are missing from society right now. I often fantasize about living in a space, and I call it an American culture, where instrumental music is required instead of cut. And just, I ask you all to just imagine how better off we would all be if we all started that at an early age. So cutting the incredible humans, the instrumental music staff who show up every day to facilitate these experiences for our youngest students, it's a mistake. It will, it will affect us now and in the future. In my current position, I advise almost 250 undergraduate music majors and minors. And each one of them has decided to pursue music at the college level because of their experiences that began in elementary school. If you consider cutting resources and mentors from our elementary students now, I will directly witness the effect in the years to come, and the outlook does not look positive. As a music teacher who now works in an administrative position, I truly recognize the difficult decisions on your plate, but I'm telling you, as an administrator, the world does not need more administrators. The world does need more musicians and more teachers, and the same goes for our school district. And I think my 4th grader might, do you want to chime in here, kiddo? Nope, it's emotional right now. This is, this is a big deal for us. So thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Brahman, Brahman, please unmute yourself and tell us where you live.
Hi, my name is Sarah Brahman. I'm in South Amherst, and I have a son in Crocker Farm. And I have two older sons who went all the way through the public middle school and high school. I'm going to keep it short, but I do, I want to echo just the thanks, not, not just to the kids, but to everybody who showed up here. It's a privilege to be part of this community. And I guess my main, so much has already been said, but my, the main thing I want to underscore is just, and remind the committee, is that the budget is a moral document, like others have shared. And these cuts will most greatly affect underserved, you know, kids in our community. Not only the music, but also the special ed, where people don't have funds for outside, outside, outside help and resources. But I also, yeah, just, also just want to echo that this, no matter, no matter what the funds are of a family, this experience of children learning together for music is just such an important thing to be funding right now, especially as everyone else has mentioned with so much turning towards screens and isolation. The fallout from COVID has been real beyond, you know, when we've been back to school. So thanks, everybody, for being here. I think, I don't know if Sunny wants to say anything. Sunny's in the 4th grade. You can...
5th grade.
5th grade.
Hi, my name's Sunny, and I am in the Crocker Farm Elementary Band with many other people on this chat, including a fellow saxophone. And, yeah, and this cut would mean a lot to all the kids who are playing in the band right now and orchestra, and all the beginners who are in 4th grade. This would just mean, the cut would be like, our teacher, Ms. Templeton, has been doing an amazing job and teaching us about music and teaching us how to play really well. And now that I've been doing it for two years, I can play, and it's thanks to her. And if she got cut, it would be very sad. And I, I'm, I am speaking for a lot of other people in the band and orchestra. So, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Matthew Westgate, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and your town. Oops, I lowered your hand, but I hope you're still up there. Yes, go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Matthew Westgate. I live in South Amherst. My daughter is in 4th grade at Crocker Farm Elementary. You met her a little bit earlier. And she just started learning the cello with Ms. Sampson and Mr. Smith. I'm a professional musician. I'm a music educator, a band director, conductor for over 20 years. And I'm the chair of the music department at UMass Amherst. One of the reasons we moved to Amherst 10 years ago was because we thought Amherst would be a place where this would never be an issue, and now it is. Budget cuts in music have a detrimental effect on our students, the school district, the community, and society. In addition to all the personal stories that have been shared here tonight, and thank you very much to all the students especially that have come. Researchers have documented improved social interaction when they participate in arts activities, especially music. Music is a medium for personal expression, encourages tolerance and open-mindedness, and fosters an acceptance of differences, and these are all goals, expressed goals, of the school district. Through learning a musical instrument and participating in ensembles, especially at a young age, students become self-aware through the expression of emotion, learn how to actively listen and respond to one another. They learn the importance of cooperation. They're encouraged to pursue independent creativity and non-verbal expressions of emotion. Playing a musical instrument in ensemble rehearsals are one of the only times in the day where they're given the opportunity to create something with other people while cooperating and creating together. There are no screens or Chromebooks involved in playing musical instruments. It's human beings, beautiful human beings, breathing and moving and making something together. And what you are proposing to cut is now more important than ever in our society. As a department chair, I am called upon often to make difficult budget decisions almost every single day. And I understand the challenge of ranking priorities, and I also understand that budgets show priorities. So the decision to not cut music, which is what we should do, will show your priorities, which should be students, teachers, beauty, cooperation, empathy, and community. And so I implore you to move music education higher up on the list to avoid any cuts in this area, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just to give everyone a sense of where we are, we'll have the final three speakers. Then I would like to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and hear the voicemail, and I will scroll through the written comments. Okay? So Megan McCara, please unmute yourself. Give your name and your town, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Megan McCara. We are, I am a new resident in Amherst, thanks to actually Dan's wife, who got our house from. Three kids, and I echo so many of the things that everyone is saying. I think there is anger too, and some people express it differently. There's, for me, this kind of disbelief in a way of, of thinking of where we're coming into, and even hearing some, some of the things about the middle school, still believing like things are moving in the right direction. But now, it does not seem that way at all. And I want to thank again also, well, first of all, the teachers that are on here, the music teachers that my kids have come into, like, this has been huge, just like everyone is saying, the music program, Ms. Templeton, Mr. Suzuki, thank you so much. I want to thank the kids for coming on here and saying it how it is, right? Like, killing the music program, okay. The way superintendent presented it did not sound like that, right? But I think that's a really dangerous thing, because it, these are the first steps for killing these programs, killing the music program, taking apart special ed. I mean, when you, when you talk about it, like, oh, it's just, you know, they'll start one year later. That's not so bad. But that's already happened, and it will continue, like people are saying. Oh, you know, we'll still be legally in compliance, when, I mean, other teachers have even said that that's not true. But these are, it's a really dangerous way to present things and make it seem okay. It's not okay. It's, it's just the first steps of dismantling these things that, like, everyone is saying are so important to the education here. So I do, I do feel anger, and I do feel, yeah, I guess still like holding on to hope, hearing those kids speak, and, yeah, that's, that's, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Declan Prindle. Please unmute yourself. Tell us where you live.
My name is Declan Prindle. I live in South Amherst, mom? Yeah. South, very south Amherst, Massachusetts. And I am in the 6th grade at Crocker Farm, and I play the saxophone. And I would like to tell you a couple of reasons why I think we should keep the full band program going. First, I want to give a couple of shout-outs to Sunny, who just spoke, and Odin, who spoke an hour ago, and some of the people in the orchestra, including my brother Reese, who all want to keep this program going. I believe we should keep the full brand program around for good, because band is great for team building. We are not just a team, though. The Crocker Farm Band and Orchestra is kind of like a family, with Ms. Templeton, Ms. Sampson, Mr. Suzuki, all these people are kind of like our role models. And if they were cut, it would be very sad to us. I also believe we should keep this around, because instrumental music can help you learn math skills, like patterns in the notes. It's also scientifically proven that people who study music learn better, and it's a fun way to learn and express yourself. I am autistic, and I know that sports can be a challenge for me, but I find music to be a great alternative option. It's a fun way to learn and a great way to learn different skills, and it's just a great alternative option all around. Please consider keeping our instrumental programs around for good. They make a difference. Since I only have like three minutes, I'm just going to play a snippet of one of the songs that we played in our previous band concert. It's called "The Lost City." Here I go. So that was a snippet of one of our band pieces. Yet again, I just want to keep this program around, because we all love to learn these pieces and like, select pieces that certain sections want to play, or the 6th grade wants to do as like a goodbye to Crocker Farm or our families, well, not families. And we want to go out there and show our families what we've learned over the semester and be just amazing on the stage. And it's really fun, and we anticipate it all year. And I have a feeling if we cut this, a lot of our 4th graders, or soon-to-be 4th graders, including my sister, who is in 2nd grade playing the cello and is going to be in 4th grade soon, will feel really sad if they cannot play this. Please consider keeping the band program around for a long time, a very long time, I mean, for good. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker, I'll call on in a moment, then we'll take a five-minute recess. Remember, you can continue to send us written comment or leave voice messages. All right, Catherine Lockman, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here and giving attention to this issue. I am a violinist and a professor at UMass, and I have three kids in the school system. Noah, a cellist, who is at Juilliard Pre-College now, who has really flourished in the music programs. Ayla, who is in Combinantes at Fort River in 4th grade, also playing cello. And Eli, who is in 6th grade on violin. And I want to speak to the tremendous work that I see the teachers doing, Yasu Suzuki, Heather Sampson, and Ms. Templeton, and the charm, patience, and perseverance that they bring to a very difficult task. It's not easy to introduce students in a public school setting to instruments, to give them the instrumental instruction, and to produce the events that they produce for the community. But I also wanted to say that those concerts are among the most beautiful and special community events that I, as a parent, attend in the town. And we recently had all of those winter concerts. I know that the teachers go over and above, and they do them at, you know, two concerts per day at each of the schools, one for the school and one for the community. And I just see parents and students so proud of the achievements and so proud of being a part of this community. And I think that is a piece that's invaluable and would be really ashamed to lose in this community. And I would also just leave off with a comment that it's like a seed that you plant. I, as a lifetime violinist, I started very early before elementary school at age 3, like many Suzuki violinists. You need many years to master these instruments, and we are providing an opportunity by exposing students. Their parents are not having to pay extra for lessons. They are having the opportunity to explore one or two instruments in the school system, and it provides an opening for a lifetime of music appreciation, music participation, and self-expression. So I also, as an Amherst resident, view this as an invaluable, special gem of our town, and I would find it tragic to lose that. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Drake, you already spoke, I believe, so unless there's somebody new else in your household who wants to speak, I'd encourage you to mail your comment.
I believe Erica's daughter wants to speak.
Her hand disappeared, but, but yes, if it's someone else, go ahead.
My name is Jennifer Westgate. I started playing cello in orchestra this year. It's, I really like it, and it's really important to me, so I really don't want you to cut this orchestra.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. All right, we will now take a five-minute break. Well, let's call it a four-minute break, so come back at 9:00, well, no. 9:20. We'll come back at 9:20. So we're in recess. Thank you. Maybe turn off your mics and your videos, committee members.
I know we're in recess right now, and I have no official standing in here, but I did just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up. I look forward to continuing to organize for you, and I am really proud of our community right now and feel really touched to be a part of it.
First this one.
Hello, this is a message for the school committee. My name is Cora Fernandez-Anderson. I am living in Amherst, and I am the parent of two kids in the Amherst School District, one fifth grader and one seventh grader. And I'm calling because I oppose all the cuts to teaching positions, the par educators, the special ed, and the music instrument teacher. I think that when there's problems with the budget, we always go to cut teaching positions, and that shouldn't be our first step. This is a labor issue. Our teachers need us. We can't have them live with the uncertainty of not knowing if they have a job next year. And I also think it's an education issue, because these people are the ones that are in touch with our kids, and like, are committed and are very caring towards the children. I want to speak in particular about the music instrument teacher, because that's the one I'm more familiar with. Both my kids are in the band. They've had amazing experiences. And Ms. Templeton, Ms. Sampson, and Mr. Smith are wonderful teachers, and I would love all the kids in the future to continue to enjoy them, and have the opportunity to learn not only an instrument, but also learn to play together. I also think that we talk so much about how we care about mental health, and music is like a key channel to deal with mental health, to improve our mental health. So, please do not cut disposition, do not cut the special ed positions, do not cut par educator positions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ismael Dahy. I'm in fifth grade, and I play percussion. I feel that it's very unfair to cut one of the instrument teachers, because there are so many kids that see the band orchestra, band orchestra play, and they just never get the chance to do it. If you cut one of the teachers, so you shouldn't cut it, since even the kids that are already in band really like those teachers. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Kristen Samagetti. I'm a resident of Pelham, Mass., and I'm the parent of a proud fifth-grade trumpet player and a fourth-grade viola player. And I'd like to submit this for public comment.
As Plato said, "Music is a moral law. It gives a soul to the universe, wings to the mind, flight to the imagination, a charm to sadness, and life to everything. It is in the essence of order and leads to all that is good, dust and beautiful, of which it is invisible, but nevertheless dazzling, passionate, and eternal form."
Thank you. That was my son Luca, and he also wanted to participate. In the weeks leading up to last week's band and orchestra concert, our house was filled with music. We were impressed by the diligence and dedication from our fifth-grade trumpet player and fourth-grade viola player. Having a concert on the calendar increased their awareness of the importance of practice and gave them a great goal to work towards. As I sat in the audience and felt the excitement and pride radiating from our students and the joy of their classmates who came to support them, along with family and friends, what struck me the most was the absolutely outstanding efforts of their teachers, Lincoln Smith Band and Heather Sampson Orchestra. I was just, I couldn't believe how all of this could be generated from one lesson a week on Thursdays. These teachers have a magical impact on our students. I understand that the Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee faces many hard challenges when making budget cuts, and I'd like to advocate on behalf of our students by naming the importance of maintaining music as an in-school educational resource for our students. Music builds essential classroom skills, improves reading and comprehension, improves mathematical ability, sharpens concentration, improves time management and organization skills. Music is community-building and has extreme social benefits. It increases their sense of responsibility, team-building skills, exposure to cultural history, promoting social skills, and boosting listening skills. It also builds a sense of community and promotes happiness. Music promotes mental health benefits. It improves emotional development by fostering self-expression, relieving stress, and creating a sense of achievement. Music helps our students develop lifelong skills, such as leadership skills, teamwork, discipline, perseverance, performance skills, and reducing stage fright. Lastly, there are physical benefits to including music education in our classroom. It improves breath work, and enhances hand-eye coordination, and increases the capacity of memory. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ellen Boucher, and I live in Amherst. First, I want to thank you for your service to our town. I know that this is a job that takes an enormous amount of time and commitment, and I appreciate it. That said, I'm calling to add my voice to those parents who are deeply troubled by the proposed cuts to special education and instrumental music. While I understand that budget constraints are real, the proposed cuts will impact our highest-needs students, and will devastate the music program in the elementary schools with long-term consequences for the middle school and the high school music programs. So, rather than simply implementing new cuts every year, I want to encourage the school committee to instead take an active lead in pushing our community to find ways to grow the school budget. The administration of Amherst College has signaled a genuine interest in expanding its financial support for the town, including the schools. The urgency is now, and the school committee needs to advocate for the immediate completion of that strategic agreement, pushing the town manager and others to speed up those negotiations. In the longer term, the school committee should facilitate a broader conversation about school funding within our community. Parents need to be aware that when they choose to send their children to the local charter schools, they are taking thousands of dollars away from the public schools, collectively stripping $3 million annually from this budget. And finally, we need to put pressure on our state reps to secure more funding for the schools. These are all actions in which a vocal and creative school committee can play a decisive role. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jeff Kalman, K-A-L-M-A-N. I'm an Amherst resident, have been for over 20 years. And I'm calling to leave a comment about the budget for next year. Besides being a 20-year resident of Amherst, I also teach at Wildwood Elementary. I am a first-grade special education teacher. And I'm very concerned about the proposed budget cuts. Post-COVID, and we're not really even out of COVID, but post-COVID, students need more support rather than less. We need more personnel to make sure that children do not fall further behind, and the only way we can do that is with people, with the hard-working, 24/7 teachers that we currently have and need more of. And budget cuts to personnel is not the answer. I don't necessarily know what the answer is. I would be happy to collaborate with anybody on trying to figure that out. But we do not need budget cuts. The students are already struggling, teachers are already overworked, and we need more staff and more personnel to see us through. So, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Solei Sanoda. I'm a resident of Amherst, a teacher with the Amherst School District, and the treasurer for our APEA Union. I'm reading a letter that was sent to the school committee. Dear school committee members, interim superintendent Doug Slaughter has communicated that there is once again a budget crisis. This is a narrative we are all too familiar with, as it has been used in the past to justify the cuts to educator positions within the district, and a refusal to offer decent cost-of-living raises for our members. These crises are due to financial mismanagement, not necessity. Specifically, this is mainly due to the district's past use of ester funds on permanent positions and recurring costs. This is a major budgeting accounting misstep. Over the past years, Mike Morris and now Slaughter have justified cuts by citing financial crisis and so-called reductions in enrollment, then a few months later, stacking on more unjustified administrator positions with salaries over $100,000. Just this past year, five new administrator roles have been added to the district payroll, none of which were posted, and three positions not in the budget. Last year, Herb Rhodes stated in the school committee meeting that cuts should be made furthest from the classroom. You, the school committee, control the budget. Superintendent Slaughter should justify to you every administrator position before suggesting cuts should be made to classroom educators and programming for students. Doug Slaughter should also justify the incredible amounts of money spent on consultants and attorneys. Expense reports should be presented to the school committee every month to review every cent of public money spent. In the past, the APEA efforts to collaborate on the budget have been ignored. The school committee refused to pay a living wage to par educators. The superintendent claims reduced enrollment to cut staff, which caused increased classroom sizes and narrated the budget crisis, but continues to add administrators making six-figure incomes. The APEA has reviewed district staffing and has attached positions that should be reviewed and possibly eliminated before considering cuts to classroom educators. We are requesting a meeting with the school committee to discuss these roles. Thank you. Sincerely, APEA Executive Board, APEA Representative Council. On the second page, there is a table that lists positions, when they were hired, and if they were hired during a financial budget crisis, the salary, and if those positions were posted. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Drucker, and I'm an Amherst resident with two children at Wildwood Elementary. First, I appreciate you all serving on the school committee, and I know the budget process is not an easy one. While we need to make decisions in the short term, we also need to be working towards a longer-term solution to grow the pot of money we have available. I have reached out to our state reps, and Mindy Dom would be willing to participate in a community meeting, where the public can learn what changes we need at the state level. This would be a starting point for our community to organize advocacy for those state-level changes. I believe the school committee would be in the best position to organize this. I believe the school committee would be in the best position to organize this event and invite Representative Dom and Senator Comerford to participate. I'd like to request that you organize this community meeting. I also remain increasingly frustrated by the lack of payment in lieu of taxes from our higher ed institutions. I would like to request the school committee call on the town and town council to update the public on this process, which I believe is one of the town manager's goals. It would be helpful to have a report on how Amherst compares to other towns with higher education institutions. This process should be public and transparent. A short-term gift from Amherst College to help with the budget would also be helpful, and it is not uncommon from other similarly endowed colleges in New England, particularly when value access, particularly those who value access to quality education regardless of ability to pay. While we owe much to the college and what they do and provide for our community, they also own a significant amount of land that is untaxable given their tax-exempt status, which limits the town's ability to grow our tax base and increase the pie of money available to support our schools. Thank you for considering both of these requests.
So that's the end of the phone messages. So I propose to display the very lengthy written comments. It is our policy to show all the comments, and it's going to take probably 45 minutes. So this, if you want to propose something else, I believe we can suspend our policies. But frankly, I, this is the hearing, I would like to show all of them. But if anyone wants to say something about that before I...
Yeah.
Or, yes?
Yes, I mean, it's an extraordinary amount of written comments that have to be displayed and possibly read by no one. But anyway, they are important for people to see. And I think we need to make space and not make space for, but assure people who wrote comments, who really want them to be seen, that they will be seen in some manner. But for where I am sitting, at this moment in time, at 9:37 at night, to have, what is it, 90 of them, 90 pages of them?
About.
About 90 pages I'm read is unreasonable, just totally unreasonable. That's one thing. Second, I have been mightily impressed by the comments that have been made, especially by the students who are closest to my heart, especially those who are in my neighborhood. And a really great shout-out, and if you're still up, Odin, I want you to hear this. I was so proud of what you said, and I'm really, really, really proud of what you said and how you said it, and how articulate, and how much you've grown since the first day I saw you. Anyway, and coming back to these 90, 60-something pages, I really think it is up to the chair to decide whether and how many of these we do tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other committee members have a... All right, I can display some of them now, and the rest on Thursday with, during our public comment period. These have all been posted. Maybe we can reattach it to Thursday's agenda as well. Would anyone object if I spend 20 minutes doing this? And then we do the rest on Thursday? Is that acceptable?
I...
I don't know. I see people... I want to hear, I want to hear from the others. I want to hear.
Sarah, it's your call.
Anybody, Deb, do you have a... I know it's my call, but I, you know, would like to hear your...
No, I feel like if we wanted to suspend the policy for next time, that might make sense. But I think for this time, we should just go through all 90 pages.
Bridgette, do you have an opinion?
I think that it depends what the purpose is. If the purpose is for us to see them, I had them by 3 o'clock, and I've read them all, and I really have so much appreciation for them. So it will be, you know, just a repeat for me. But there are so many other people here who may have come tonight who will be, you know, hurting to see how much community support there is for something that they care about. And so I think probably, you know, I could see going either way, Sarah. I don't want to influence you, but I think with so many people here, probably letting them see them and have the opportunity to is probably a good idea.
Okay, well, then I'm going to plow, I'm going to plow through. But I do need maybe some advice from the superintendent. There is, and I have put at the very end of the document, all the comments, written comments from people in Pelham. And I don't know whether I need to show them.
That's not the superintendent's call, Sarah. That's your call.
Okay, I mean, if, all right, okay, then I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna show them, and you can, yeah, I'm gonna show them.
How many are you going to show? All of them, Sarah?
That's what I want to do. That's what I want to do. I, all right, hope you can stick with me. Oh, yes, so the first one I'd already shown because, yeah, that was not part of the hearing. So we're beginning here.
People may want mute.
Could I volunteer to read this comment? It represents over 140 people's signatures.
Is this the same one you read earlier?
Uh, no. It's, I'm just volunteering to read a comment.
Is this Angelica? Speaking? Who is speaking?
No, this is Amy Kalman.
This is Ellen. I'm also a member of CPAC. I believe Angelica read a comment letter from CPAC, and this is a petition that was signed by over 140 people. So this is a different comment.
I'm just going to show it as we're, I'm showing all the others.
It represents over 140 people.
As one of the signatories to that email, or rather to that letter, I'd appreciate that it be read.
Same. We can't, we can't see the screen, and there's not really been a whole lot of effort made to make this accessible to us, like now. So I think it should be read also.
I'm not going to privilege one comment all over all the other-
It's 140 comments.
I understand.
If you won't do that, then read the rest of them.
I'm not going to read any of them. Point of order.
Sorry, Sarah. You do have to respond to the point of order.
Was it a committee member?
That was me, Sarah. Deb.
Yes, it was.
I cannot see anything. All I see is the documents, though.
Okay. So my question was, where is the policy on this?
Who is speaking, please?
This is Deb Leonard.
You'll have to search in that. Maybe Jennifer knows about scrolling the public policy. It's B E D H.
There really isn't any policy at this point in time. And really, right now, where it stands, it is, it's up to the chairs. That is the chair's discretion, unless there's an overrule by the school committee. But there's really no clear policy on this. And we, we, we tried to deal with this a few months ago, when something similar came up. And it still hasn't been dealt with in an appropriate manner.
Can I ask Jennifer Shaw, who's on the policy committee? I think maybe some of the others of you are. But to talk about the status of this policy, I believe you're working on-
The writing out it probably could have been read by now.
It's policy B E D H. It is, it is in effect. Yeah. It, it is a policy and it is, it is in effect. But the school committee can vote to suspend a policy, but it sounds like that isn't what we've done.
But what is the policy, anyway?
It's policy B E D H, IRF.
Yeah. I certainly know what that is, but I do not know specifically what that particular policy was, which we, did we just approve that at the last meeting?
We did not.
So if we didn't approve-
The existing policy is still in effect.
Well, the existing policy is in effect. And the existing policy then would take precedence.
Chair Marshall, this is Debbie Westmoreland.
Yes, Debbie.
I have the policy pulled up. I can read the section if you'd like.
Please do.
Go ahead.
Written remarks, being the expression of the views of the writer, will be displayed on screen during in-person or remote meetings and will not be read aloud. Written remarks should be sent to the chair and clearly labeled as public comment. Email not labeled as such will not be included in the public comment segment of the meeting.
Thank you. Oops. Lost my place.
Chairman Marshall?
Who's speaking, please?
This is Alex Lopez, president of the APA. Given that what Ms. Westmoreland just shared, this is not a petition that was written on behalf of the writer. This was a petition that was written on behalf of 150 people. And so, given that, and just to give some context here, we write as parents of students with IEPs and 504s to express our concern over the proposed budget cuts, which will impact our most vulnerable students. We urge you to refrain from these cuts, as they will adversely affect the quality of our ARP spec-
Excuse me? You're out of order. We are not reading or taking any more spoken comment at this point. If you would like to come to the Thursday meeting, you may speak to public comment then.
Oh, I appreciate that, Chairman Marshall. I, I know that we have plenty to talk about when we start talking about cuts to the regional budgets too. But I just wanted to make sure that, given that the policy is the individual writer, and this is something that has been expressed by 150 people, I do believe-
I'm sorry. It does not, there's no difference. It is submitted, it is written public comment, submitted to the public comment email. I'm not going to read them or take any more oral comment at this time. If you want to read it on Thursday, you may do that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Once again, if folks want to have an open reading of these, we're willing to facilitate that, and they can reach out to me at restorethemiddleclass@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Who's speaking?
This is Deb Leonard, committee member.
Oops.
The back and forth between the public is not part of this process. And while I understand that there is differing opinions about that, this is not an appropriate part of the meeting for these kinds of discussions.
I agree.
I agree.
Oops, sorry. I'm going to scroll ahead because the APA read the statement, but they wanted me to show the table that they referred to. I'm going to stop right here. Let me just check. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Hanging in there. Considering the hour, I would propose we adjourn as long as we can move all the remaining agenda items to Thursday without any problem. Do we just continue the meeting?
That would be, again, on you to figure out. It's less than 48 hours before Thursday's meeting, so you'll figure it out.
All right. Well, then let's put it this way. Are there, well, are there any warrants?
Yes.
How many?
Quite a few. I can read past them.
Are there any gifts?
I don't know if there are gifts.
Oh, okay. All right. Why don't you go ahead with the warrants? Oh, I should say, so, so that hearing was closed. I'm sorry, Jennifer, just a moment. So, all right, so the budget hearing is closed. We do have to have a school choice hearing. That is on the agenda. I'm sorry. Doug, can you just, I don't think we have any, will have any, I didn't receive any comment about it. Could you speak to that?
No, what I'll share with you all is the following, is that by default, the school is considered a school choice school. It would only be if you wanted to not be a school choice district that you would have to take an actual vote on the matter. But you, you know, you have to have the discussion about it. So we can't take the vote tonight, which you wouldn't really have to do anything. But usually we do an affirmation sometime before June 1st. But tonight is an opportunity, and like you said, we received a comment relative to that. And it's really a question of whether there's any other comments or concerns people would have or, or opposition to remaining a school choice district.
Right. So I didn't receive any written comments, but I, I think I must invite the public. If you have any, any strong feeling about school choice that you wish to express at this time, you can also send public comment anytime. I see no hands. All right. So we will close the hearing. Jennifer, you can proceed.
Well, thank you. I just wanted, so I just, I have a question about school choice, which is that Doug, if we're, if we were to vote differently, we would have to do so before June 1st?
Correct.
So, yeah. So I might suggest that we have, I, I would like to discuss it, even if we don't decide to do anything differently. So I just would suggest, Sarah, that you put it on some future agenda.
Yeah, I have it on Thursday's agenda, I think, for a vote, so we can discuss it then. Yeah, or we can, or, or delay it, because as you say, there's no urgency. All right, you can proceed with the warrants then.
Okay. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $538,999.50 dated February 7th, 2024. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payable, payment in the amount of $1,700. Sorry, this is a Crocker Farm student activities transfer in the amount of $1,700 for the transfer dated January 31st, 2024. Sorry, bear with me. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $144,589.63 for the warrant dated February 2nd, 2024. This includes general fund expenses of $80,910.43 revolving fund expenses of $25,321.61 and grant fund expenses of $38,357.59. I, on February 2nd, as I said. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payables in the amount of negative $4,401.64 dated January 24th, 2024. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $450.74 dated January 24th, 2024. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $540,409.5 dated January 24th, 2024. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payroll in the amount of $723.38 dated, dated January 24th, 2024. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $243,271.45 for the warrant dated January 15th, 2024. This includes general fund expenses of $151,031.53 revolving fund expenses of $17,461.24, grant fund expenses of $37,532.3 and other fund expenses of $37,246.65 for facilities. And that is it.
Thank you. All right. Doug, is there any brief update you wish to give at this point? No. Terrific. I have updates, but I think it can wait. I think it's also allowable for us to add documents to this agenda after the meeting? I think so. I will, I will check. And if that is allowed, I will just write up my updates and attach them to the agenda and they will be available to the committee and the public. All right. All right, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm officially adjourned.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Erv, all right, I have to take a roll call vote. Erv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, Jennifer.
Yes.
Deb. You're muted, I think, but.
Yes.
Yes. Bridgette.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are adjourned Thursday, 6:30 at Town Hall.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good night.